To call to order the regular meeting of the Nishoba Regional School Committee. And at this time, I would ask that those who so choose to rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Okay, um, the first item is of course our citizens' comments. And I am, I have enlisted the help of Mary, Amy, and Mike to read them. So I think, Mary, if you are prepared, can you begin?
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, the first is from Dara Ambrose from Bolton. As you are aware, DESE have recently issued regulations setting out a minimum standard for live instruction time effective January 19th. These standards state that schools operating a hybrid learning model must provide students with access to at least thirty-five hours of quote, "live instruction", unquote, over a ten-school-day period, and that schools operating a remote learning model must provide students with access to at least forty hours of synchronous instruction over a ten-school-day period. Using my Nishoba High School and Florence Sawyer Middle School student's schedules, I calculated that our district provides twenty-seven point three hours of synchronous instruction per two-week period in the high school. Parentheses, a shortfall of twelve point seven hours, end parentheses, and thirty hours in the middle school parentheses, a shortfall of five hours, end parentheses. Although the average number may somewhat increase when accounting for high-need students, it's unlikely to be enough to meet the standard when there are other factors which result in students having less synchronous hours. For example, many high school students only have classes in six of the seven periods in certain classes such as wellness are always asynchronous. I also looked at the DESE website showing the information school districts submitted in November, and I was surprised the hours listed for Nishoba are much greater than what we see in practice. The report shows Nishoba High School is having forty hours of synchronous instruction per two-week period, and the middle school is having thirty-six hours per two-week period. This information comes from the daily schedule tab on the report, and then the website is cited for DESE Student Learning Time Dashboard, S L T. I noted that tonight's agenda includes an item on student learning time. I hope that during this discussion, you can provide clarity on how the data reported to DESE was calculated and how the district intends to meet the DESE standard which is effective next week.
Thank you, Mary. Amy?
Yes, I'll be reading a comment from Laura Roberts of Bolton. Dear school committee members, I am writing in advance of your meeting tonight to express some of my concerns with the details regarding student learning time. I have reviewed the information submitted by the district on the S L T dashboard. I have a second grader and a third grader in the hybrid model at Florence Sawyer School, F S S, and they do not currently receive thirty hours of synchronous learning over a ten-day period. Currently, they have around twenty-eight hours of synchronous learning over a ten-day period. The S L T dashboard claims that students receive one hour of synchronous learning on their independent quote-unquote "learning days". My children have never had synchronous learning time on the quote-independent-unquote "learning days". They have, they only have a two-minute attendance check in, in the morning. After reviewing the synchronous learning presentation included in the committee, meeting committee, meeting school committee materials, I'm concerned that the district is either unaware of the current lack of synchronous learning time in the hybrid model across the district or that it is very inconsistent across the district and at the various grade levels. I'm also very concerned that the district's plans to increase synchronous learning time by a hundred and twenty minutes over a ten-day period are insufficient. For my students, that would mean that synchronous learning time is increased to thirty hours a week, which is far less than their peers in the R L A. I have already heard feedback from parents with students in the R L A that the teachers have told them R L A students are learning material at a quicker rate than hybrid students. Adding one hundred and twenty minutes over a ten-day period is not sufficient to close the gap between R L A and hybrid learning models. I hope you will ask the superintendent to address some of these concerns at the school committee meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Mike?
All right, so I'll be reading two letters that were submitted. The first is from Karen Yesway of Bolton. I'm writing because I'm concerned regarding the learning time information submitted by the district on the S L T dashboard. My son is in second grade in the hybrid option, and his synchronous learning time is currently twenty-eight to twenty-nine hours over a two-week period. The dashboard indicates that hybrid students receive one hour of synchronous learning on the two fully remote days each week, but this is something we have never received. Other than the five-minute attendance on those days, his work is done completely independently. I am particularly disappointed with the lack of synchronous learning time on Wednesdays. My son currently receives between two and two-and-a-half hours of synchronous learning on Wednesdays. It appears that the district intends to add one hundred and twenty minutes over the ten days, but as you can see, that is not sufficient to reach the thirty-five-hour requirement. I hope further changes can be made to create a more equitable learning experience for all students. Thank you for your time. And the second letter comes from Michelle and Ben Dowes, also of Bolton. I have reviewed the data submitted by Nishoba in regards to student learning time at the middle school level, and it doesn't match what is actually happening in my home. On asynchronous workdays, my sixth-grade daughter checks in at eight fifty to make sure she is counted in attendance. She has no other live interaction with the school after that point. She definitely doesn't receive one-and-a-half hours of live instruction, as reported to DESE. By my count, that now puts us out of compliance with state regulations. How are you planning to add that time back into the schedule to make the data reported to DESE accurate?
Thanks, Mike. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda to move the second reading of policy K I and I H B A A to precede the consent agenda.
I'll move it, Madam Chairman.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Is there any need for discussion or comments? Okay, I'll take the vote. Leah?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And me. Yes, okay. So we will move to under unfinished business. E Policies K I and I H B A A, second reading. Leah, do you want to speak to this?
Uh, it, there's not much that needs to be said. I would open the floor to my colleagues here to see if they have any questions or concerns. I think that the documents that were submitted to us this time around pretty well articulate what has been removed, replaced, et cetera.
Anyone else from policy want to comment? Do any members of the committee have questions for either the Policy Committee, Joan, or Venetia? Joseph?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just going back to policy, K I, is it K I or K one? I don't even know which one.
It's K I.
K I, okay, in regards to school visits. When I looked at this the first time, I, I thought there was some language that was a little bit inconsistent and incongruent with regards to this particular policy, and my concerns still linger as of this evening. When I read the policy, I look at the first paragraph, and it says that "The school committee welcomes parents, guardians, and the designees to visit classrooms to observe and learn about the instructional programs taking place in our schools." And that seems like a very nice and welcoming statement of opening in regards to the policy. Then I go down to paragraph ten, and it says that "The observer will be informed that they are there to evaluate the appropriateness of a specific educational program to meet the needs of an individual child." I, I don't know if my fellow committee members find that language incongruent, but I do. Because it says, on one hand, it's saying, "Well, you're welcome to come to our schools and, and learn about our instructional programs taking place in our schools." But then we go to paragraph ten, it says, "Oh, no, you're not there to observe our instructional programs. You're there to, you know, determine the appropriateness of a particular educational program involving a particular child." And, and that strikes me as a bit incongruent. So I'm just wondering if my other fellow committee members feel the same way about that, because it just seems a bit stilted.
Um, Leah?
So I see where you are, Joe, and I think that the operative word is evaluate.
I was wondering if that could be revised.
And so what I'm, what I'm picking up from this, and Joan, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong. I think that earlier, it's really about observing slash, and like evaluating for your child's needs as opposed to evaluating the teacher in the room. Right? You're there to evaluate the program and not the teacher. I think that's what paragraph ten is trying to do, is to, is to say, like, you're not going to walk away from this and then go talk about how that, the program's great, but that particular teacher is not for me.
Right, it's not to evaluate the teacher, it's really to observe the program and see how the program is delivering special education needs to the student, and then to maybe give the team feedback around suggestions or to talk about what they think is going well. And Venetia weigh in as well.
Joe, to clarify, is your concern that the introductory paragraph provides that the teacher, oh, I'm sorry, that the parent or designee is there to observe and visit the classroom, whereas paragraph ten focuses on evaluation? I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Is that where the issue lies?
Joseph?
I'm sorry, was that question, was that question directed at me?
Yes.
Okay, so, one lawyer to another, I'm looking at that introductory language, and I don't see anything in here that says that the recitals at the beginning of this policy aren't binding. So I'm looking at this thing, and it says that "We're inviting parents to observe and learn about the instructional programs taking place in our schools." Okay, I show up at the school, I want to come in and observe the instructional programs taking place in the school. And I'm being told in paragraph ten that now I'm being limited to evaluating the appropriateness of a specific educational program to meet the needs of an individual child. I inform the principal, that's not what I'm here for. I'm here to observe the instructional programs taking place in the school, not here regarding an individual child. So I'm, I, to me, it's, it's inconsistent, and unless there's some qualify here that says that, you know, that particular recital is not binding or not enforceable or not meant to be, you know, forcible on the, on the observer, it, it just seems to me as if you're opening the door to just saying, "I'm going to come in and I'm going to observe." And you can't limit me to one particular program and one particular child and the appropriateness thereof.
Yeah, I totally get where you're coming from with that. I guess to respond to it, that is a valid point. And I, I think that the introductory paragraph can certainly be amended and changed to a degree to make it very clear that it's with respect to observing instructional programs related to the parent's specific child. I think that that's certainly doable. I, I get where you're coming from, because it could be a situation where an observer comes in and says, "Well, I'm not here just to about, to evaluate the appropriateness of one program. I'm, I want to look at all of the programs." Is that, is, am I understanding you correctly?
Yes, and you know, Venetia, if I make, refer to you by your first name, I, I think we speak the same language, so I think you appreciate where I'm coming from on this, and I, I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
No, I totally do understand, but that is a valid point. And I think, well, I think, I think the, we're looking at it very literal, I think, but I do think the introduction really just serves to tell all parents that you can look at all programs, but only those programs that are specific to your child. But I think the language can be changed a bit. This language here comes from, from, if I'm not mistaken, the boilerplate language that was, that was used from school committee policies. So it can certainly be changed, since we've already made several other changes.
Um, I saw Mike's hand up before. Mike, do you have a question? And then I saw your hand, Rich, I'll get to you after Mike.
Well, yeah, but I'm, now that, now that Joe has kind of clarified, and I'm not sure if this really gets to the thrust of his concern, but with regards to paragraph number ten, and Joan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It's not, it's not entirely atypical at all for a parent, a prospective parent that may be moving their child into the district or into a particular program to evaluate the instructional model, again, to evaluate whether it's appropriate for their particular child, right? So that's not entirely uncommon, but, again, stepping back, Joe, it, it sounds as if your concern is more with the first paragraph rather than the tenth paragraph, is that right?
Mary, respond, Madam Chair?
Yes, I'm sorry, Joe.
No, my, my, my concern, Michael, excuse me, my concern, Mr. Horish, is that there are people in this world like me who look at these things and try, you know, and say, "Well, wait a minute here, you know, I'm not going to be limited to just looking at this one particular program regarding this individual child, and, and I support my contention by looking at the introductory paragraph to this." I, I'm just sort of poking holes in this, because frankly, I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. If we say that we're, you know, we're allowing parents to come in to observe and learn about the instructional programs, that's fine. If we're saying, "No, your, 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 your observations are to be limited to the appropriateness of a particular program, particular child", that's fine with me. I, I'm just saying, pick one, so there's no inconsistency, and you don't have to deal with tools like me who come along and try and poke holes in these policies.
Rich, did you have a comment or a question?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. First of all, I would never characterize Mr. Gleason as a tool. But secondarily, if you're going to rework those first introductory paragraphs, I believe the second paragraph is one long run-on sentence. When I read it, it just goes on and on and on. So if, if this is a policy that somebody's going to read and understand, you know, perhaps it could, you know, be edited to be incongruent, incongruent with English grammar.
Other comments or questions for either the committee, Joan, or Venetia? Leah?
I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate paragraph ten, because I think it's important that observers know upfront that the evaluation of professionals in the room is not their purpose for being there. So just in case we were thinking about eliminating paragraph ten, or maybe even eliminating that sentiment, I would advise against it, because it doesn't exist in the model policy currently. And so, Venetia, where did you bring that, how did you bring that forth even?
Uh, if...
Because I like it.
I feel like it was possibly in the model policy. I, I, I feel like it was, if I'm not mistaken. But if it wasn't, if it was not, it was certainly something that Joan and I discussed, the need to include that language. I know Joan is, was very adamant that she wanted to make it very clear that that was certainly a piece of, of what goes along with parent observations. So that was certainly something we wanted to make sure that got in there. And I think for the first two paragraphs, I mean, those, those paragraphs have been in the, the school committee policies for some time now, if I'm not mistaken. Those were paragraphs that I did not even make changes too much or thought to take out. But if committee members feel very strongly that it should be reworked, Joan and I can certainly come together and, you know, have conversation about that. But, you know, it's, it was certainly, again, kind of like that, that language, the boilerplate language that was provided for in the proposed school committee policies by MASC.
So any other questions or, or, um, comments about policy K I? Joan?
I, I'm just wondering, I'm looking at that first evaluate, and I'm wondering if assess could be a better word. So that, just a suggestion and a language revision, so that it's clear you're there to assess the appropriateness of a specific educational program for a student, so that assess and evaluate aren't in the same paragraph, and it's not about evaluation of the teacher. So that, that would just be a suggestion I would make.
So what I'm hearing is that there may be some concerns about some inconsistency between a sentiment expressed in the opening paragraph and then the statement that is made in paragraph ten. Are, this was the second reading of the, the policy, and I, I want to get a sense from the committee if we want to send this back to policy to be changed in any way relative to the comments that were made, or do we want to vote for, vote for it based on the substance as we see it now, and then send it back to the committee and Joan to do some wordsmithing? If anybody wants to speak to that, raise your hand, and, because I, I, I'm not quite sure what we do next.
Can I just add something before you move on?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. I, I'm wondering if for, also to add to Joan's suggestion, if paragraph ten, instead of saying the appropriateness of a specific, taking out the word "specific" and just having "educational program", I think, and I think someone mentioned this earlier, that there may be a situation where a parent does not have their student enrolled in the school or, or even the district, and may not even have an idea of any of the programs that are provided, but wants to just kind of get a glimpse of what the, the district has to offer in terms of educational programming. So maybe just having it open to, rather than just a specific program, to educational programs, and maybe that will actually kind of make it more, more of a smooth transition from the first paragraph, if that makes sense.
So what would it read then, Venetia, if you don't mind? How you would change it?
So I would say the paragraph ten can be changed to say, "The observer will be informed that they are there to assess, as Joan recommended, the appropriateness of an educational program to meet the needs of their, their child or children." And then go on to say, "They are not there to evaluate a teacher's ability to perform his or her contractual job duties."
So we would be striking the word "specific" then?
Yes.
Okay. Steve?
I'm, I'm not necessarily sure I'm happy with, with the concept of allowing people who either are not not, not, that do not have children enrolled in the system or that are not contemplating, for example, that I'm, I'm moving into one of the communities, I'd like to see what's there. That's fine, but I would, total outsiders coming into the system to observe for one reason or another, God knows for what reason they want to observe, but I think we have to make a distinction, that it's either, that, that we allow people to come in to see the appropriateness of the program for their children without, without doing any evaluation of teachers. But that is only, and only allowing them in if they have recently moved into the tri-towns or have children that are moving from one school to another within the system. What I'm saying is, I don't want people just, you know, people who have no connection with the system coming in and observing any, any of our programs. I don't think that's, that's appropriate.
Thank you, Steve. Amy?
Yes, thank you. I noticed, I, I have, I wanted to build on what Venetia was saying about item ten, because I noticed in item one, we're already saying that parental requests, either verbal or written, to visit classrooms for the purpose of observing educational programs will be welcomed as long as the educational process is not disrupted. We already state, um, I, I just wonder why we have to include language in item ten about the observer being informed that they are there to evaluate or observe. If we're going to replace that with observe, the appropriateness of an educational program to meet the needs of an individual child, because it's already been stated before that, and is the purpose of item ten just to say that they are not there to evaluate a teacher's ability to perform his or her contractual job duties?
Okay, before we get to that, I want to circle back on Steve's concern, and maybe Venetia and Joan, you could speak to that. Am I mistaken in that the district is required, or school districts are required by law to offer some sort of accommodation for parents that want to observe educational programs, but it's up to the district to put some, you know, boundaries, for lack of a better word? So to Steve's point, someone who is just shopping for a school would not be able just to come and say, "I'm thinking of moving to your district, but I want to check out all the elementary schools so I can make a decision about which town." Um, could either of you speak to that?
Yeah, the intent is for it to be district students. I think that when we talk about the observer, I think in ten, it's really about maybe a parent is having a designee, like, a specialist come in to observe their child in a session, in a setting, and it might not be a parent or guardian, but it might be a, somebody with a specialty area.
Okay, and it does say in paragraph two, "Visits by parents, guardians, or their designees." So that, to me, assumes that the child is currently enrolled in the, the school.
Right.
Steve, does that make sense? Does that address your concern? Steve, does that make sense? Does that address your concern? So to Amy's point, um, about, um, I'm sorry, Amy, I'm toggling on the, on the document back and forth. Um, your, can you restate what you, let me see what I wrote?
Yeah, I, I think the point I'm trying to make is that we are, I feel like we're inviting confusion. This is, um, when we are, when we include language in more than one of these items about the purpose of the, of why the parent is coming. So maybe, it wasn't clear to me, um, Joan, that number ten was intended, like, as referring to a specialist who might be coming? But, so maybe that would clear it up? Um, cause I, I think what I was leading up to is, should we just remove the first statement, the first sentence from item ten? And would that eliminate the inconsistencies in the policy with regard to why parents or observers come into the school? Cause it's already stated elsewhere in the policy.
Leah?
I was gonna say kind of the same thing, Amy, because I think that what number ten is trying to do is protect the professional in the room. That's like the spirit of ten. The second sentence is really the operative phrase, and the first sentence is just redundant. But like Joe pointed out, um, kind of trips into number one. So just, um, nixing the first sentence, would that be okay?
Venetia, legally, where would we stand?
I, I don't think that there would be any issue with removing that, the first sentence of paragraph number ten. I think that the purpose, uh, of the observation is, uh, throughout the, uh, first two paragraphs of the policy, and then also stated in paragraph one, as was previously stated here. So I think that that would be fine. I think the crux of, of paragraph ten is indeed that we just wanna make it clear that the specialist i- i- is there, if it is indeed a specialist or a parent or guardian is there, uh, for the purpose stated in the policy, but not for evaluating a teacher's, uh, ability to perform.
So if I'm, if I'm following things correctly, where we are right now is that the policy would, um, uh, stand as revised, with the exception that the ten, paragraph ten would read, the observer will be informed that they are not there to evaluate a teacher's ability to perform his or her contractual job duties. Is that accurate? And that would be the only change to the revised policy that we are considering. Is that correct? Rich?
Uh, I just recommend that we look at the preamble and just make it more readable.
That's a wordsmithing thing. If it doesn't change the substance, that's something that can be done.
Yeah, just break apart, make a part of fifty words in a row to like, you know, read, you get it.
But if it doesn't change the substance of the policy, that is something that can be done. If we, um, uh, accept in, uh, uh, what's the term Alida? When we were doing the policies, we approve in form or substance?
Approve as amended.
Approve as amended. So, yes, um, Leah, and then Mary.
Just, just so that you guys know, the first two paragraphs, although perhaps wordy, they are taken almost directly from the model policy. I think that, that's kind of why they're there, like that.
And we lost Kathy.
Oh, completely.
Cause Elaine's in charge.
Okay, sorry. She, yeah, I thought she just like walked away for a sec. Oh, no, she's back.
So, you know, the, you know.
Hi, John.
My apologies, I have a, a family thing.
I think we could break that second paragraph up into two sentences. I agree with Rich that it seems very wordy. I mean, I think we could put a period after the word discouraged and get rid of because and start the school districts policy, and then that would make it into two sentences pretty simply, and I think would add more clarity. Do you agree, Rich?
May I address her, Ms. Cudia?
Yes.
I, uh, I, I agree. I just, I think if you want people to follow it on a practical level, you need to make it so people can understand it, so. Thanks, John.
So we'll do those, is that something that they can, oh, I'm sorry, Mary, I'm sorry, Mary.
But this is a, this is a different point. I just wanted to check with Joan, um, in regard to number ten. Um, looking, um, to, for protection for our students with special needs. My experience as a principal, what the people coming in to observe a specific class would often be, um, specialists who might, um, be, um, might be working with the district or be hired by parents. And so I just wanna make sure, Joan, that, um, that that wasn't the part of the intent and, um, of that first, that for a sentence in ten?
Well, I think for confidentiality, we ha, I think this is the problem with merging two policies into one. I think we've kinda, it, it's been challenging. But I think that if we look at number eight, there's an agreement around confidentiality for the observation. Um, Dr. McCarthy, that addresses exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, all right, good.
Um, so what I'm hearing is that we want to, um, amend the policy, uh, to eliminate the first sentence in paragraph ten, but to have it read that, um, the observer will be informed that not they are evaluated teacher's ability to perform his or her contractual job duties. That's one amendment, and then the second change would be in the, um, um, punctuation, if you will, of, um, paragraph two, but it would not change the substance of what paragraph two says. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so are we ready to entertain a motion to accept policy, uh, KI, um, as amended?
Don't move.
I need a, somebody to say, so moved.
Don't move.
Thank you, Elaine, and Amy second. Okay, any further questions or discussion? Okay.
Madam Chairman, quick question?
I'm sorry, Joseph, go right ahead.
Quick question, just, just clarification on the motion. So the motion reads in part that, uh, we are striking the first sentence of paragraph ten?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And, yes. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're ready to vote. I will call the roll. Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rich? Not Rich. Who's the other Rich? Mike?
I know the other Rich?
Well, you both have hats on, I got confused. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Joseph?
Yes.
Uh, the original Rich?
The generic white guy Rich votes, yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Thank you. Amy?
Yes.
Kathy, yes, and Leah?
Yes.
Thank you, and thanks to the policy committee and, uh, Joan and Venetia for your hard work on that. And, um, so now we will move to policy I H B A A for the second reading. Um, Leah, is there anything that, that we need to know or comments or anything with regard to that at this point?
So, um, I think that I would say the same thing again, that I don't have anything to necessarily add, but I think that the version that they submitted to us is, um, very well documented, what's being removed or changed, et cetera. So I would turn it over to my colleagues.
Elaine or Amy, any comments about the policy? Okay, any questions from the committee on this policy? What comments? I am not seeing, oh, Dr. McCarthy, yes.
As, as magnificent a job as we have done reading, um, the, the comments from citizens, I, I, I think that citizens, many citizens, will be grateful to be able to read, um, their comments in person. So I just wanted to add that.
Oh, we're not doing that, that's not the one we're on, Mary.
Oh, oh, all right.
We're on the, um, that's.
I H?
Yes, uh.
A A.
A A, observations of special education programs.
Okay, sorry, take that back. I got it now.
No, save it for another time, we'll get there. Okay, so, um, I'm not seeing any questions for anybody? Does, Rich, and then Leah?
Just one quick question, perhaps Leah could answer. Just what, what's the substance of the changes in terms of what the intent is?
Um, I could tell you what I believe, but because we have so many experts here among us, uh, Joan or Venetia, would you like to, um, say again, kind of what the gist of the change is?
Sure, I think the goal is to have, um, the visits or observations be consistent among regular ed students and special ed students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Oh, I'm sorry, Leah, go ahead, and then Joseph.
I, I feel like my internet connection is terrible tonight, so I'm sorry if I'm bugging out, but, um.
You know, you're good, keep talking.
Okay, all right, so there's a, there's a cross-reference to KI down here on page two that's been crossed out. Should that be crossed out?
So I just wanna make it clear that for I H B A A, the, uh, the proposal is to strike every provision of I H B A A and just include a, I'm sorry, a statement that, uh, references, um, the reader to KI, school visits and observations of school programs, including special education programs by parents, guardians, and designees. So this entire policy will be completely cleared. The content will be cleared aside from that statement I just read. And then therefore the cross-reference to KI, Leah, to answer your question, is not needed because we're already referencing it, um, at the top.
Great, thank you.
Joseph?
Well, that, that kinda throws a curveball at me because you're saying refer to KI. And then if you go down to paragraph, uh, ten, we have the same language again about, you know, what they're there to do and how they're there to do it and whatnot. So, um, I, I'm, you know, I, I like the language. I like the language in the former, uh, uh, K one, as far as what the, the individual is there to do and, and the limitations they are on. But I'm just wondering if, if by, again, referencing, referring to K one, we have the same language that we just struck from K one, or K I, excuse me.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Venetia.
All right, uh, I, I just wanna make sure it's very clear. I don't want there to be misunderstandings. So with I H B A A, this entire policy will essentially be clear. There, none of what's here, it will, the proposal is to strike all of the provisions here and just have a reference to KI. And the goal of that is, is because of the fact that you, to have two separate policies that are inconsistent is what brought about the issue of, um, differential treatment between special ed students and general ed students. So in an attempt to make sure that there's consistency, the, the proposal is to have one policy eh, around school visits and observations for both gen ed students and special ed students, which would be reflected in KI. Therefore, in the I H B A A policy around observations of special ed programs won't be needed, he, it won't be needed under I H B A A because the provisions would be discussed in KI.
So we are striking essentially, um, I H B A A and replacing it with KI?
Exactly.
Is that correct?
Yes, which is.
Exactly, so don't have your wordsmith or any of that stuff. This makes it very easy. I like when that.
What?
Any other questions? Steve?
Then why do we even have to have an I H B A A period?
I'm gonna defer to. Yeah, the, we had taught, we had kinda gone back and forth, does this belong in KI? Are we calling it I H B A A? And I think that, you know, um, we're required to have a policy for special ed, um, observations. And so there was a regulation that came out in two thousand nine that requires it. So I, I guess I wanna make sure that we have a reference, that we have one policy that covers both, but there's something that they can reference in them to say, there isn't a policy for special ed programs. And it goes with the, kind of the model that, uh, MASC puts out for the naming of each of the policies.
And if I may, um, one of the, as a practical matter as well, just given how the school committee policies are labeled, uh, what will end up happening is that you will have I H B A A. And if you remove that, that policy, um, then there would be a gap between whatever is before and after I H B A A, if that makes sense. I don't know what it is, so I can't tell you offhand right now, but it will be a gap, which will be very noticeable. And as Joan said, it, it, it makes sense also, given that this is pulled directly from the model policies, to just make it very clear that there is a policy, because folks may automatically go to I H B A A, given that it is a model policies and many school, many school committees adopt the model policies to know that, hey, that we do have a policy around special ed programs, observations of those programs, it's in KI.
I know it doesn't make sense, Steve, it's just the way the school committee policies work, I'm sorry. So essentially what we're voting for is the, um, to, that, that our policy I H B A A would be a reference to policy KI, is that correct? Venetia, is that what we're doing?
That is correct.
All right, any other questions? Yes, Joseph?
I, I apologize, Madam Chairman, I, I don't, it's not my intent to beat a dead horse here, but, and, and perhaps Ms. DeAngelis can speak to this, that it, it strikes me that these policies, that the, the attempt to sort of marry or reconcile these policies is to create consistency among our student body, whether the child happens to be a special needs student or not a special needs student, and, and the, the manner in which we treat the parents whose children may or may not be special needs. If that's in fact the intent and purpose of what we're doing here, then I, I go back to my original question. We just struck the language of the first sentence of paragraph ten in policy KI, yet that language now reappears in paragraph ten of policy I H B A A. And if we're looking to be consistent, then shouldn't the language be struck here? Why are we subjecting, uh, that type of qualifying language to the parents of special needs students? That we're not doing it for parents of non-special needs students?
So I think what we're saying is, if you look, Joe, at that policy, is from one to twelve, we are wiping all that language away. And we're gonna have I H B A A, Observation of Special Ed Programs, where it says, refer to KI. The rest of this policy will not be referenced here. We're asking you to go to KI. So the language that we just voted on is consistent, and we're using one policy that covers both.
I am now more confused than I ever was, so. Are we striking this particular policy?
Yes. Leah?
Well, um, so I'm sorry that, I, I'm also confused because I didn't know that until Venetia just said it. So I think that what's confusing is that some is stricken and some is highlighted, but ultimately all of the text should be, have strike through, right? It's all being stricken.
Yes, that is correct. The reason why s- some in I H B A A is stricken and some is not, is, uh, some provisions are not. It's mainly so that it was very clear what was going over to KI, which provisions were going over to KI verbatim, and which provisions were not. Which is why I provided a PDF version with copy, with comments that indicate where you can find the provision from. where you can find the provision from I H B A A and K I.
I think we're asked to provide a compare and contrast, and that's why you have both of the documents, so you could see them.
Yes, exactly. In our earlier meeting, there was some conversation around the fact that you wanted to see what the differences would be in terms of the provisions from I H B A A and those provisions as indicated in K I.
Any more questions? Uh, Steve?
Yeah, I, Joe, I, I think basically I H B A A is now only going to say, "Refer to K I." That's it, period. There's going to be nothing else in I H B A A, but since we had to have a policy that dealt with special education students, this is just kind of a space saver in there. That's why before I questioned why we even have to have it, but being lawyers, we have to have something between I H B A A and I H B A B or something like that. So it's, it, it, it kind of just sits in there as a space saver, okay?
Okay.
It's, it's, it has nothing else but the, but the line, "Refer to K I."
Joseph?
Yeah, just for clarification purposes, and I, I understand where you come from regarding the sequence of the policies. And generally, when you look at statutes and what have you, and it's a statutes repeal, it will just say, "Chapter X, Section Y repealed as of such and such a date." So i- if I understand correctly, the policy will now read, "Refer to K I," and there'll be nothing left else as, as far as the, the policy is concerned.
That's correct.
Okay, so, so we are in a sense, striking policy I H B A A in its entirety.
Yes.
That's fine with me.
We've seen it with K I, okay? All right. If there are no more questions or comments, I will entertain a motion to approve our policy I H E A A, um, as presented, which is to say that it makes reference to K I, essentially replacing it. Can I have a so moved?
So, so moved.
Have several. I'm gonna go with Steve for the move.
Second.
Who's gonna, who's that?
Leah. Sorry, it's dinner time.
I love watching you eat. Please enjoy. So I am going to call the roll. Let's start with me. I say yes. Amy?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
And Rich? And Joseph?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mike?
Oh, sorry. I was waiting for other Rich. Yes.
Oh, okay. Um, and Mary?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah, I left you for last, so you can get a few more votes in.
Thank you, yes.
Let's say.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, it passes. And I think that at this point, I would like to thank Venetia for attending and for your patience. And you're welcome to stay, but you are free to go. And thank you so much for your help. And thanks again to the Policy Committee for all the work you've done. And this is Joe, too. I think this brings us into compliance in an area that, um, we needed to be compliant in. So thank you so much.
No problem. You all have.
Okay. Thank you, Venetia. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and I will entertain a motion from Elaine.
Yeah.
Relative to consent agenda.
Yes, I moved to approve the consent agenda of January 13th, 2021, containing the meeting minutes of December 16th, 2020, and December 21st, 2020, and the warrants of January 15th, 2021.
Second.
Second. Mary seconded. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we will proceed with the roll call vote. Steve?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Um, Mike Horish, the one and only?
Yes.
Okay, Joseph?
Yes.
Um, Rich?
Yes.
Um, Brett?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes, Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the School Committee Chair Updates. There are just two items tonight. Uh, just a reminder that Saturday, January 23rd, is our annual budget workshop. Um, it will be virtual. It will be from eight to 12. It is a, um, a business meeting. Um, and so while it will be, um, recorded, um, it will just be, um, our discussion, our Brooks' presentation and our discussion about the budget. Um, in the past, um, we would, uh, get the, um, the, the budget books. We will get them. We will have to go pick them up at Central Office before, on Friday, before the 23rd. And Brooke will send out an email to us, giving us what time, um, that it will, they will be available, um, uh, to be picked up. I am happy to, um, pick them up for the folks in Lancaster. Um, if, if that would be helpful, just let me know. Um, but that's all I have on that. Are there any questions about the budget workshop? Okay, the second item, typically, um, we would have, oh, I'm sorry, Rich.
You rookie school committee guy, um, will we be, will committee members be able to ask questions of the?
Absolutely. Yes. So you get the book ahead of time. Um, you have an opportunity to look it over. Um, Brooke, um, and her team do a presentation for us about, um, the, the budget drivers and um, other things that we need to know about. And then we have a discussion. Uh, Brooke and Pat lead us through it. Um, in the past, we've had presentations from various school departments. That will not happen this year. It's a very different year. And so, um, if I'm not mistaken, Brooke, we are starting with a level services budget. Um, and we'll go from there. I know that this has been the focus of work. There's been a lot of things to focus on at work, but, um, to have this prepared and ready for us, um, on, on the 23rd. Brooke, anything you want to say about the, the workshop?
No, I think you've said, you've said everything. So wait for an email from us to, to let you know when the, uh, the hard copies are ready for you, the, the binders are ready for you.
Thank you. So in the past, we have had, uh, obviously, for our workshop, even though they were business meetings, members of the public were welcome, but we always had a budget forum meeting that preceded a school committee meeting and, uh, prior to our adoption of the budget or our vote on the budget. So, um, again, we were in person. People could just show up. Um, since this is a very different year, what I would like to propose to the committee is that we schedule a virtual, uh, budget forum, which would be a public forum on the budget, looking at the, um, the, uh, the, the, the calendar, um, it would make sense to schedule it for Wednesday, March 3rd. The next school committee meeting would be March 10th, and I would assume that that's the meeting at which we will take a vote on, um, the district budget. So, um, I want to, um, open that up to the group. Uh, we'd have to vote to, um, schedule that meeting. Um, and then I'd have some other comments to make. Rich, you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm all for more dialogue, um, but we have a public hearing. And the intent of a public hearing is to get public comment on the budget. So I, I guess I want, but the, what?
That's what I'm talking about. I'm calling it a budget forum or public comment. So it would be a public forum. I'm sorry, I wasn't here.
It just has a purpose. It's a statutory requirement that we have a public hearing on it, so.
That's correct. And so this would be, I called it a forum.
We got, we got that covered.
A public hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the calendar that way, too. So that's what I was confused about. Thank you. Sorry.
And sorry to contribute to that confusion. Um, so, um, would I like to get a sense of, um, if someone would like to, to make a motion to schedule a meeting for a public hearing on the budget, um, which would also be a public forum on the budget, um, I would entertain that motion.
So moved.
Do we want?
Second?
March 3rd.
March 3rd. Second? Um, Sharon is sending. All right, now, questions or comments before we vote? Yes. Rich?
I, so I was just looking at the.
Rich, I just called.
Okay, we have a, we have it on the calendar for February 24th. I know that's probably just a suggested date. Are we preferring the 3rd?
Hmm.
I'm look, I, I, I looked at, I, I did not want, I want to allow sufficient time for public participation. We would typically have a public hearing on the budget, um, uh, before a school committee meeting. So what I, my suggestion for this year, because of the circumstances on this year, is to have an additional meet.
Got it.
Um, but if people prefer to have the public hearing on the 24th, I mean, that's something to discuss, too. I quite frankly, am concerned about adding anything else, uh, before a regular meeting, given the, the length of our regular meetings. So that, it's just a suggestion. Um, and that's why I'm bringing it up, and that's why it will, uh, come to a vote, so the committee can decide.
Yeah.
So, yes, Amy?
Sounds okay with, for me. I just want to hear what other people think.
Thank you. Amy?
Yes, thank you. I was just looking at my calendar, and I have something on there called superintendent evaluation. Are they due that day, or is there some meeting?
On March 3rd?
I don't know what that is, but it's on my calendar. Maybe I have it on, in error.
For, is it for March 3rd?
Yeah.
I have nothing. I, I looked at the calendar. I looked at each school's calendar. I looked at the.
Evaluation training, six to seven.
That, that would be before a regular school committee meeting. So it'd be the date of a school committee meeting. So it'd either be the 10th or more likely the second meeting in March, but not on the 3rd. Okay?
Yep.
Okay, other questions or comments? I'm seeing none. Do we want to vote on scheduling the meeting for March 3rd? Can I call that vote?
Kathy, what time?
It would be six. Start at six. I would, I would say six to eight. Okay, I'm going to call roll. Um, Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Uh, me, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, thank you, everyone. So we, Alita?
Who moved the motion? Who moved the motion?
I don't know.
I moved the motion.
Thank you, Steve.
Oh, Steve did. Sorry. Okay, so, um, this will be a, a first for us, a big public forum like this. I know we did the feasibility studies, but they were chunked down and, um, Elaine and Leah did an incredible job with that whole process. Um, but what I would like to do, if, uh, they are willing to do it, is ask the Communications Subcommittee to develop, um, some protocols for conducting this meeting to include, um, just the operational aspects of the meeting, um, putting together the expectations for participation, and, um, how we would communicate these. Obviously, we would have school messenger to go out, but how it would could be communicated through the town. So, um, if this is something that the Communications Committee would like to consider, we have a significant amount of time. So if, um, I know you folks have a, a meeting coming up on the 19th, if you want to consider it at that time, then when we meet on the 27th, you can let us know what you decided, and we would still have time to, um, find another committee, if you guys don't want to. But I'm sure that, um, I mean, it's right up the, the, the Communication Committee, list of things they like to do. Is that okay? Okay, I think that ends that. And so we will now move to the superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. Um, so I'm hoping that Tanya is still there. There she is. Tanya is still there. I'm going to start with that. We want to send out a note of congratulations to Tanya Rich. We are so thrilled and so proud. Um, NRSD would like to extend a note of congratulations to Tanya Rich, our NRHS Athletic Dress Director. Ms. Rich recently received the news that she's been awarded an N I A A, that is, the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association State Award of Merit. This award is given to individuals in recognition of outstanding leadership and personal commitment to the values of interscholastic athletes. Ms. Rich continues to be an incredible asset to NRHS, and we are so fortunate to have her as a team member and leader within our district. Congratulations, congratulations, Ms. Rich. So, thank you for all you do, Tanya. Um, normally, we would be in the school committee room right now, giving flowers. I sent flowers earlier on behalf of all of us. So I want you, and she sent the picture of them, so I know that she's received them. So, Tanya, thank you so much. Congratulations for all, uh, uh, thank you for all that you do. It's, we're just so proud to have you as part of our, our NRSD family. So thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you for the flowers. They're beautiful.
Uh, the second item, and I know that we've got Lisa Gilbicki on, um, with us. I saw her earlier. I don't know if she's there. She's, thank you, Lisa. Uh, so we're going to talk just quickly about COVID testing here and, uh, uh, give a bit of a COVID update. Lisa, I'm just going to kind of tee it up, and then I'm going to kind of turn it over to you to, uh, to explain some of the, the details for us. Um, so in, in November, um, NRSD applied to be part of voluntary Abbott-Binix Now testing that was made available through D E S E. Um, we were approved for that initiative and are in the process of putting all the measures in place to roll it out. We just recently, for example, received the test kits, um, and we anticipate that that will begin next week, and Lisa can explain that a little bit more detail. And then late last week, D E S E also announced another testing initiative, which implements pool testing. Um, this is for schools to take advantage of as well, but of course, on a voluntary basis. Uh, we are applying as a district, uh, to be considered for that testing program as well. A couple of school districts, and again, Lisa can expand on this, uh, kind of piloted it, uh, earlier, and now they're, they're coming forward with it and saying, okay, what other school districts would have interest in doing this and taking part in it? So these two tests are completely different. Um, the Abbott-Binix Now is specific for individuals who already show definitive signs of COVID. Uh, the pool testing, um, if we are considered by the state to implement that, uh, is, it will be implemented completely differently. Pool testing looks at larger groups of individuals, um, at the same time, for example, like 10 students at a time, and, um, it, that, that would belong to one pool. D E S E is hosting a webinar this week, when we expect to learn more details about the ladder testing process and expectations. So Lisa, that's kind of a bit of a tee up for you, if you can kind of take it from here and give us some greater detail. Um, this is all really quite new. I know you were just on a, a meeting yesterday about it. Uh, is there, because we, uh, the superintendents, we haven't been, been given a lot of detail, but I think you were given more detail yesterday. So can you pick it up from there?
Sure, absolutely. Um, and thank you for having me on today. So happy new year to everybody. Um, so I'm going to go back to the, um, our original Abbott, um, Binix Now testing that we will be rolling out, um, shortly. Um, we're hoping by Monday, um, Um, we're hoping by Monday, um, it may be Tuesday. You can't hold me exactly to that. And the reason for that is, um, we had to have, um, many initiatives in place um, for that. We were, um, accepted into the phase one trial of it. It's intended for districts and schools providing any type of in-service instruction, whether it be hybrid, um, full in-person, um, or in-person services for just high need special, uh, special populations. Um, it was, um, a little bit of a tedious process. We had to have a lot of initiatives put in place. Um, long story short, we had to apply for a CLIA, um, laboratory, um, waiver. So we are now considered a laboratory in all of our schools as well, um, and had to have standing orders. Um, we had to assure that we had enough PPE, et cetera, um, to make sure that we can move forward. Once we got the go-ahead to move forward, we also had to train all of our nurses, which was a very easy training. They're, they're already well-equipped on how to, um, access the testing kits. Um, but we also went a little bit further. We felt that, um, they had a train the trainer. Um, we conducted that on Thursday, and all nursing staff were trained over Monday and Tuesday with additional PPE and testing kits have been supplied to every school. Um, they all, um, demonstrated and used the kits into the, um, control substances on those kits as well. Today, I met with the nurses and we went over, um, Project Beacon. Project Beacon is a third-party vendor that we then will have to, um, conduct consents from parents, um, for students and, um, staff, and then those students that are over eighteen could consent for themselves. Um, and then that's also the, um, uh, venues, so, um, or vendor, I should say, to, um, send results to DPH, which is also part of our requirements. So, um, the state has supplied all of that to us. Again, that was, we had to get all nurses activated into that system. We went over some training on that today, so as far as what consent looks like, and then how to report out. Um, the last piece of this, in order to roll out the testing in school, again, for those students or staff that then become symptomatic throughout the day, is to get a link from Project, um, Beacon to send out to staff and parents of students. Um, they will sign in and consent on their own on that aspect, and then we will be really, um, ready to go and do the testing on-site. What the testing would look like, it's changed a little bit since the last time. Um, shocking, things change, um, consistently, it seems with COVID. So there's, you know, I always say as, as of right now, um, it looks like they've made a li- a slight change in the past. If there was a positive with this rapid test, we would still require another positive PCR, and that's no longer the case. That is new, um, that if it is positive with this, um, uh, Abbott's, um, Bionics Now testing, we can consider that as a, um, positive and, and move in that direction unless the families decide that they want to retest. Um, because, um, there was a study that was done at Lawrence General Hospital. It was ninety-eight point, ninety-eight point six percent, um, effective. So they're feeling that we can just move in that direction. If a s- a student or staff comes to the, um, nursing office and, and the nursing team deems that they need to be tested, this is not, I can ask for a test. I want to be tested. It is, um, it's based on symptoms. So we, I want to make that clear that it's not just, we can test anybody. Um, it's based on the symptoms. Um, if they meet the guidelines of those symptoms and we test them, it comes back negative, we would still send them, um, home to receive, um, a PCR test. But if the P, if, if it comes back positive, we can contract trace immediately and, um, place those that need to be on quarantine and those that don't need to be on quarantine. Um, that, any questions on the Abbott-Bionics Now before I go to pooling?
Sure. Elaine has a question.
So if the, um, Bionics is only for symptoms and it's done in the schools, like if you, if you wake up in the morning and you have symptoms, you shouldn't go to the school?
Correct. Correct.
It's only for kids that come down with symptoms during the school day?
Correct. We will, we would, we do not want, we're still sticking with, if you're not feeling well, you stay home. That is still the, correct. It's great point, Elaine. Um, and we're hoping that, um, families will continue with that suit. We don't want this to turn into a laboratory. Um, we're not seeing that in some of the other districts that have ruled this out. People, um, for the majority are still following the rules. If you don't feel well, you stay home, you call your primary care provider and you get tested or reach out to your nursing staff. It's, it's those that halfway through the day, because not everybody wakes up sick, right? We sometimes like by one o'clock, I'm like, ah, I'm not feeling so well. Like, you know, coming down with something doesn't happen always in the morning. So we want to make that clear that, you know, it does happen. Uh, people come into work and/or school and, and by the end of the day, they're not feeling well. So this is an opportunity to test them.
Thanks.
Other questions? Mike?
Lisa, what is the, the turnaround for these tests?
Fifteen minutes.
Great. Awesome. Thank you.
Other questions? I see no hands.
Okay. Do you want, do you want me to continue with pooling?
Keep going.
Okay. So I'm just briefly about pooling. I did sit in on a webinar. Um, it, it is, um, it, it was, it was the, the first initial launch, so to speak, of, um, of a webinar to talk about what, what the pooling will look like and in a nutshell, a little bit. And again, it was not a lot of information, but enough, um, to, to get the gist of it. They had three other towns, Salem, Medford, and Watertown that were on, um, there. And Watertown has offered for us to go out and look, because they've been doing this since September. They kind of like the, you know, the co- call it that pilot ahead of time, and now this is opened up on Friday to the rest of the districts. Um, it's really important. They're really looking at that we have the capacity to do this Abbott-Bionics Now prior to. Um, so we are that district, right, that we're gonna hopefully get this up and running by Monday. If not, hopefully by Tuesday, it's really just the Project Beacon that we want to make sure that link goes out to everybody. Um, but the pooling looks like you're taking between ten to twenty-five. So most school districts seem to, they, they did between ten and fifteen. Um, the majority staying at ten. There was a few that went up to fifteen. And they all go into the same tube. They're little tiny little, um, swabs that they can swab. The older kids, believe it or not, they were having swab themselves with observation. They put it in a little tube. The tube is sent off as a PCR, and everybody that's in that tube, which is, for example, ten, ten swabs in that tube, tube, if it comes back positive, you contract trace and you quarantine everybody within that tube, um, within that cluster, so to speak, um, until there can be, um, other testing done. And what I mean by other testing, they then ask that we follow it up because we're not quite sure who the positive is, right? So it's, it's, you got a, you got a positive. This is all about surveillance and screening. And then you set up an outside mobile, because they cannot come into the building if we think that they're positive. So then they set up a separate outside, um, mobile unit or an other area, um, that would be less access into a building, for example, in one gymnasium door out and other. But, um, that was one suggestion, but all the sites are currently doing it, um, as a drive-through, so to speak. Um, and then you would test that ten pools to see, um, if one of them and/or more than one come back positive, so you can put the others off of quarantine right away. And then, again, that's that fifteen-minute test. The original pooling test, those swabs take twenty-four to forty-eight hours. It seems like many schools that have done this already will test on Tuesday to get results on Wednesday, because they're remote, and then contact trace then and make arrangements for this mobile unit. It's a lot of resources that are gonna be needed for this. Um, uh, you know, without having to look at the big picture, it was, they gave us a small snap it of it. Um, but then you're looking at an A and B cohort, and then how do you contract trace? Um, they're doing it over the weekends as well. So they do, again, the, the pooling sample, um, of students. Um, schools have done it differently. So in the elementary school, the nurse went around with the cart and went to each classroom and did the cluster in the classroom, put them in the vials, and then they send them off to the laboratory. Um, at the middle school, they did very similar. Um, they did it during homerooms. Um, and these, again, are only suggestions. And at the high school, they did it during lunch periods. Um, again, they swab, they put ten in a vial, they send it off to the lab and get it back, um, within twenty-four, forty-eight hours. And then you would have to, um, test all of those if something came back positive within that cluster. Um, and then you would do that with the Abbott, um, Bionics Now for fifteen minutes, um, to determine, um, positives or negatives within that cluster and who can return and who cannot return to school.
And the pooling, uh, testing is for a six-week period, correct, Lisa?
Six weeks only, and then after that, each swab is five dollars, a swab, one swab. And that's not including your carriers. So that's, that's just talking the swab. Um, it's not including, so during the six weeks, they, they're supplying us with those, um, with the reporting and the consenting with that third-party vendor, whether it be, they haven't described what it was yet. They just said what was included. Um, and also the laboratory courier. Um, after that, you're, you're responsible for all of it, including the, the web-based program that you would, very similar to the Abbott X Bi- uh, Abbott Bionics Now, we have to put everything into Project Beacon, right? And we sup- we supply the test results. If we test somebody in the school and it goes to DPH automatically and to Project Base and to the parents. This new pooling is different than, than the, um, Abbott Bionics Now that, um, we would have to actually, after the six weeks, have a carrier or somebody to transport the, the stuff to the lab as well as all the lab. Um, um, only the swabs are five dollars. I, I can't imagine with the test tubes and all the other paperwork and the web-based program is going to cost. They didn't indicate that during this initial webinar. We're still so in the infancy stages of this that, um, we have until, we already applied or, um, filled out the survey. So we have until January seventeenth. So I don't expect to hear anything until next week, and then there'll be more information that'll come forward.
So I think, uh, uh, I think we want to be clear that right now, we are only looking at the six-week period. We are not looking beyond the six-week period right now, because we have no idea what the full extent of the costs are going to be. And, um, you know, in talking to the superintendents who have played with different numbers, i- i- it's pretty expensive after the six-week period. I'm not sure whether we'll be able to carry on with it or not. And my hope is that maybe between now and the end of that six-week period, maybe some of those costs will have been shrunk or truncated or, because right now, I, I don't know that we would be able to carry on beyond the six-week period. But if we get accepted, I'm thrilled that we've got the six-week period. Questions? Thanks, Lisa.
Uh, Leah, you can go first.
Uh, thank you, sir. Um, I just wonder, oh, thanks, Kathy. I just wonder how many clusters are done?
The entire school.
Oh.
Yeah. That is the, that is the intent of the program, the surveillance and screening. Now, to say that, um, it, you know, for us to first roll this out, I'm sure we're not gonna go gung-ho and do the entire school to start off with when we, in order to get our feet wet to, to make sure that we're, we're doing everything appropriate, um, after all the trainings, we'll probably start. Um, y- you know, with a smaller cluster, but, but the intention is that the entire school is done once a week. That's the intent of the pooling.
And one nurse is gonna execute that?
No. That's, that's a great. Had lots of discussion. This is a magnitude of resources that is going to be needed.
Rich, did you have a question?
Uh, I like hear what Amy have to say.
Amy, do you have a question?
I do. Thank you. Thank you, Rich. Um, my question is related to the timing of this and whether it's also tied to the status of the learning model. I thought I read that it, the school has to be in a hybrid mode or something in order to get the, to be able to apply or something. So when, when would the six-week period begin?
Not a clue. Uh, we don't know yet, because we haven't been accepted into the program.
We may not even get accepted at all, Amy.
Okay. Okay. I, you know, someone had asked me whether the, the, you know, it was tied to being in a hybrid status and if that would impact the change in model at the high school if, if we were applying to this program.
No, it would not. They, they, the, the specific question that they ask is, what is, what is your, um, majority of your mode in K through eight being hybrid? That's what we put down.
Related to. My dog keeps barking. I'm sorry.
He has not been recognized. You have.
Other questions?
While Amy is getting her hound under control, Rich, do you have a question?
Yeah, I mean, I, I was, when I was in the, uh, Lincoln Subry Public Schools, they had a program that I participated in. I don't know how similar it is. It was done by the private company. But I looked at the cost. I think it's like twelve or fifteen dollars per test. Just looking at the total cost, dividing it. You know, th- they had a, I think it was a hundred and eighty dollars for students to participate in it. So I guess, you know, that was just for the high school. Obviously, this is another level of complexity, because high school kids could swab themselves. Um, you know, i- it is gonna be a lot of organization. Um, perhaps it's a model you want to look at, because they've been running that since December. So I'm sure, sure Brooke is networking around and, um, there's my dog talking. But, uh, but, you know, I, I think it's, uh, a surveillance testing, that's what's missing from everything, right? The, having some sampling of what's happening, some qualitative kind of testing will be reassuring for everybody, for, for not only the parents, but mostly for the teachers, right? We want them to feel, um, confident going into the environment. So it'll, it also allows the nurse to, uh, you know, direct resources in the proper areas rather than, you know, making guestimates, which is, you know, probably the hardest thing about her job right now. She's do her best guess based on the models and what she sees elsewhere. And this would be actually based on data, so you could actually make decisions on what's actually happening in our community. So I, I want to see what the cost is, but I think this is something that would be, and, um, you know, something very beneficial for, for the school community.
Thank you. Amy, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. I've called in help for the dog situation. Um, I guess my only other question with regard to pool testing is, would that allow us to bring in, would that give us the confidence to allow us to bring in more students? You know, if we're doing pooled testing and the results are negative? Um.
I think, Amy, it's too soon for us to even broach that topic, to be honest. We have to see if we even get into this. And then I think we have to see how we can roll it out. And if we have the resources, uh, human resources, for example, to do everything that the intent, I, i- if you heard Lisa, she continuously said the intent, the intent. We want to get there, but we, we, we're baby steps. We just made application to see if, if we could even be a participant. So I think we just need to take this one step at a time.
Other questions for Lisa? Thank you, Lisa.
Okay, Lisa, don't.
But don't go yet.
I'm not leaving.
One second. Uh, so that, because my next item is COVID. Again, uh, COVID continues to affect our, our schools and our, our buildings. Um, please continue to keep current with our dashboard in the front of our website. Uh, I know that Lisa updates it regularly. Um, our principals continue to send out regular memos citing cases specific to their schools. And the district, of course, continues to send out a kind of a, I think, longer memo at the, at week's end with everything. Um, Lisa, before you leave, just touch base and tell us what you're seeing so far. I, I know today was a bit of a tough day. Today, I mean, that's, that's just an understatement.
Yeah.
Give us a flavor of, um, you know, where you're at right now.
So I, I'm just gonna, um, I don't have, um, numbers in front of me. I know you all see the numbers with the dashboard, so I will make sure that it's updated again, um, tomorrow. I'm, I'm, I'm usually updated, usually on Mondays, if not by Tuesday morning. Um, and I apologize, this week has been, um, a little busy with us coming, yeah, coming back from the holidays. Um, we had a lot of positive cases over the holidays that we put on that dashboard and also sent out the, uh, last Friday's memo um, that indicated that there was, it looked like a lot of cases, but a lot of it happened over the holidays, which we expected a little bit of that to happen with family gatherings, um, et cetera. So we kind of felt like it was important to include it, because if we were in school, those would have been positive cases within our schools. So we still, um, um, make sure that those numbers are there. I want to make- make sure that those numbers are there. I want to make sure that people understand that also in that dashboard, when those numbers say positive cases, we don't know about all of the remote ones. We try our best. But we find sometimes with word of mouth because, you know, in defense of families as well, if they're remote fully and they're not within the schools, they they sometimes I just feel like they don't feel the need to let the schools know that somebody's or their child is or student is positive. Because sometimes they just don't have, they have mild symptoms and they can still continue with with remote learning. And and we're not always notified. So those numbers, you know, are probably higher than than what it's indicated on the dashboard, but we can only report what's reported to us. So I just want to make that clear to all. And what we're seeing right now, we had a few cases today with some contract tracing. I will share that when we first started and came back in September, and I'm hoping I'm making the assumption correctly here, but I feel confident in that that, you know, it it was hard to to shift to a different mode, right? And being six feet apart and wearing masks, and it's just not normal for all of us to be doing that. And I can honestly say our staff and students are doing such an exceptional job over the last few months because I think they really unfortunately get it. And really, it's it's become the new norm for them that they they do maintain social distance. You see students and staff when they're standing close to each other, you see them taking two steps back, which I think in September, you didn't see it as much because we still weren't normalcy of of what that looks like. So when we look at contract tracing, which is tedious in itself because we really want to be cautious that we don't put anybody on quarantine that doesn't need to be, and we also don't want to miss somebody that should be, right? So that takes some time and and the staff has really done a great job saying, oh, no, I don't go near anyone anymore, you know, after seeing all the cases. So it's it's people doing what they're supposed to do, and they've done a really good job, and the students are just outstanding. Sometimes when you see the large numbers, it's hard to explain why they're larger sometimes and smaller at others. And that's really just based on the dynamics of what the classroom and and or services that are being provided. We anticipate very similar to Thanksgiving that we're going to start seeing the influx in the next week and a half from from Christmas and New Year's. I think some of the positives that we saw during the the holiday break was from a little bit before Christmas. But very similar to Thanksgiving, it was two weeks after Thanksgiving that we really saw the effects of those positive cases coming about based on gatherings or travel. And a lot of our cases still remain to come from the outside of school, not inside. It's coming from the outside. So anything else you want me to add to that, Brooke?
That's it. I think you summed it well. Lisa, I want to, I know we've got questions, but I can't thank you enough for your leadership in this area. And the the hours that you put in, I mean, I know that we all put in incredible hours, but the the hours you've put in have just been unbelievable. And it absolutely measurable, really. So I thank you so much for your incredible leadership and your your experience in this area has just been amazing. So I thank you so much. So yeah, questions for Lisa before we move on to the next topic?
I saw Brett's hand up. Brett, do you have a question?
Yes. Any discussion yet on getting our staff vaccinated?
Great question. Not soon enough in my eyes. You know, it's we, I spoke with the Board of Health today, believe it or not. Tamara from the Nishoba Associate Boards of Health and Jim reached out to me today. They're setting up their clinics, I believe in Shirley. I was asking them where, if they needed other spaces. I was gonna connect with Brooke if we needed to use the high school, but they said that they think they're all set because, you know, I was volunteering us already. Sorry, Brooke. But there, nothing on our staff as of yet. They're still in that. They changed the phases. I will share with you. We received it this morning. Every Tuesday and Thursday, they update the phases of when they're going to be vaccinated. And we're still not there for teachers. It's, in my eyes, it's not soon enough. They, I I don't understand why we're not up there faster. But as soon as we find out, it'll be shared. I did share the new vaccine phases with the nurses today so they know where we're at. And again, then the Shoba Associate Boards of Health are going to start clinics once a week on Wednesdays. And I'm hoping it's going to start next Wednesday. They're going to start again with the first responders, but by the time they get up and running, they're probably going to be on the next set of group of people. I will share with you that five of our nurses were able to get vaccinated. So we're happy about that. We got our first shots. We get our second ones on February fourth.
Thank you. Leah, did you have a question?
So my question is, my question's tangential to COVID, so maybe you can come to me last.
Okay, Mike, did you have a question?
Yeah. Lisa, I just want to thank you for your ongoing efforts in compiling and 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 updating the data on the dashboard. And I I look at that pretty regularly. I'm wondering if there's any way to share out a link to the raw data that is being used to construct the bar graphs? Is that possible? I'm just, I guess that's just a request and maybe something to consider. I think it would be a useful tool for people who want to sort of, in Kathy's words, disaggregate the data.
Okay, let me look. I think we we have to be really, really careful on that. I mean, it's no different, Mike, than, you know, we we can't share whether it's a student or right? So I think I think we would have to be really careful and check that out. I don't know whether we could do it or not. At least, at least I don't want to step on your toes on that, but.
Yeah, I, because we don't identify one or the other as far as at this time.
Okay, well, we can connect offline.
Why don't we connect offline, Mike? Because I I want to make sure I'm clear what you're asking, and and I think we should take that offline. And then, yeah, absolutely. Thanks, Mike. I appreciate that.
Leah, you ready?
Sure. So Brooke, I'm wondering, I assume that Lisa will take her leave soon, and my policy subcommittee report is so much later in the meeting. I wanted to perhaps, if you don't mind, Madam Chairman, bring this up now with Brooke while Lisa's here. And it's really about the flu vaccine.
And I have to interrupt because I want to be very careful about topics that we introduce that have not been listed on the agenda.
This is not, it's just informational.
I I don't want to take the chance with being non compliant with OML with regard to things that are discussed that are not on the agenda. So it's it's not personal. I'm being exercising an abundance of caution. I'm wondering if it is a question that you could submit through Brooke to get an answer to? And again, I'm sorry, but I'm.
No, that's okay. I mean, I can wait until the policy subcommittee report out. So that's fine. I just, Lisa won't be here, but Brooke can probably just answer it later.
So it's okay. Thank you. Questions for Lisa? I don't see any. Lisa, I echo everything that Brooke and Mike and the committee has said. It is just, I can't even imagine. But thank you and and to your team for all you do and you continue to do. And with optimism and good cheer, and it means a lot to all of us. But I I I think that I think of the role that the nurses play in the school with the kids. And you guys have done such an outstanding job. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Have a good night. The next item on my clearly very long superintendent's report is mascot update. So I'm just going to start and then I'm going to kind of turn it over to Tanya Rich and Steve is still your calling name. But so I'm just going to tee it up quickly and then we'll turn it over to you. We continue, of course, our work in this area has been ongoing. The NRHS administration and Ms. Rich continue to work with the guidance and supportive and outside consultant who's helping to guide this work. The survey recently closed that they had online. They're working on next steps now and are tracking the the challenge rebranding and the costs that are associated with that. We've not put any type of large scale budget line into the next budget year. So I want to be really clear. You know, I think that you heard Pat earlier say that we're looking at a level services budget as best as we can. So there is no new large money line in that budget for rebranding. We'll take incremental steps as they naturally evolve, for example, with uniforms or or whatever that looks like. So with that being the tea up, Tanya, I'm going to turn it over to you and Steve for any other specifics that you'd like to offer. And thank you to both of you for all of your work on this mascot update and and just the rebranding period. You've done a great job.
Thank you. So as you know, the first step in our process was to have that survey that went out to the entire Nishoba community. The survey was open for two weeks and we received approximately fourteen hundred responses to that survey, which was fantastic. The group that we're working with, the Who, the Heard Strategy Group analyzed the survey results and has provided us with highlights and recommendations from the survey. While analyzing the results, I felt like they did a great job because they took into consideration mascots of surrounding high schools and other schools in our league, which was nice to see as well. So right now, Heard's giving us a list of naming options. And our committee is going to review these naming options then next week. And then the committee's goal is going to be to recommend three names to move forward to the Heard group. At that point, the Heard group's going to continue, and they're going to begin creating visuals for these three recommendations that we give them. It's going to take them two to three weeks to work on these visuals and graphics. Once you receive the graphics from Heard, our committee is going to host some virtual student voice sessions where we're going to gather input from our students. And we're looking for input on pros and cons of what the graphics look like, some character traits of, you know, these options that we have for mascots and just overall thoughts. We want to see what the students feel. And something could be like, it could be any animal. Let's just say it's a dog. Maybe they don't think dog number one is fierce enough and dog number two looks too happy. So we'll have these graphics to look at. We'll see what the kids think. We figure we'll do some Zoom meetings, have a random breakout rooms, have our committee facilitate those breakout rooms and gather more data. Once we get that data, we'll go ahead and meet back as a committee and go to the next step with Heard. Steve, did I miss anything? I know we we met for a while this week. Okay, great.
Any questions from the school committee with regards to the mascot update and where where that's at? They've been, they've been working for several months now. This is not just like right now. This this has been ongoing for the last couple of months.
Just a point of clarification, and maybe I missed it. Tanya, did you mention that the there is a main committee, essentially a task force? And then they're going to do the student listening breakout group so that students will be included. Input from a lot of students. And they will be looking at the three that the committee want to bring forward. Is that correct?
Yep. So Heard has given us, I believe it's like a list of ten or so names that came out of that survey. The committee will pick the three that they think are the best out of the list. And Heard gave us some recommendations as well, but we want to see what the committee feels if they match up with Heard's recommendations. And then the committee will host those listening sessions where we will invite all the students. We'll have a few different options of times and dates and then gather information for any student who wants to join that meeting to give us some feedback.
Super. Thank you. Leah?
So two quick questions. First of all, I I'm sorry if I missed it. What is the composition of the committee is my first question. I mean, and really what I want to know is are there students on it? But my second question is, would you be able or willing to include middle school students in the student voice conversation? Or do you think that's not appropriate?
So first question, so the committee does have students on it. Teachers, coaches, and alumni. And these are people who've reached out to either Steve or I since July, interested. And like I said, then we're going to open it back up. The middle school piece, this is the first time that has come up. I think it's something that we can discuss next week at our committee meeting. And I feel like we could definitely have a listening session and invite, you know, middle school students onto that session as well.
Thank you. Other questions for Tanya? Nope, I'm not seeing any hands. So Brooke, anything else for?
No, not for Steve on the mascot. Tanya, thank you again and congratulations. We're so proud that you work for us and with us and for the kids. You just do an amazing job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on my list, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. McGuire for teaching and learning PD update.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a quick update on teaching and learning department and our professional development update. The department and our professional development committee, which consists of faculty and teachers from all over the district and several buildings have continued to work on our March fifth day of professional development, which will still happen this year. It's just going to happen in a complete virtual forum. We just finished with the theme. This year it is going to be Nishoba Fosters Belonging. And we know that we have a keynote address from Dr. Mark Brackett, who's the director of the Center for Emotional and Social Emotional Intelligence at Yale University. Myself and Martina Kenyon, our curriculum director, were able to meet with his team this week and set up what that's going to look like virtually. So he'll be delivering a keynote address in the morning and then also doing a workshop in the afternoon. And that being said, we're really pleased to report out that we have over thirty sessions that we're going to be offering in the afternoon with the focus really on the idea of social and emotional learning, fostering a sense of belonging. We've got workshops on from integrating social emotional learning in remote hybrid and in person classrooms to emotional intelligence, neuroscience of anxiety, teen depression, positive anxiety, yoga, healthy balances for screen time, compassion fatigue, self care, strategies for supporting our LGBTQ students and staff, creating an anti racist classroom. Our racial climate task force from Lincoln Sudbury will be joining us in a variety of, you know, other seminars and workshops that we will offer throughout that entire day. So we've done a tremendous amount of outreach and really been listening to the needs of our students and our staff, especially in the middle of a pandemic. So that's really going to be the focus of our day. So more to come on that in the brochure will be coming out soon, but we urge all of you to attend. It's going to be pretty easy to attend this year, particularly in a remote setting. So we're really excited about it. And we're really almost there with completing our agenda. So there'll be more to come on that. I'm pleased also to speak a little bit about our middle school remote learning academy update. We're excited and really excited to bring on a couple of new teachers to our middle school remote learning academy, particularly at the grade six level. This has now enabled us to further personalize the learning in the remote learning academy at the middle school level as well as change the schedule to ensure stronger synchronous learning time. So our team worked hard over the break to develop a new schedule to provide longer synchronous learning blocks and more one on one time between teachers and students, in particular to be in line and exceed the new synchronous learning time regulations that will go into effect next Tuesday. And just, and I'll speak a little bit about it in my report later, but just to give you a flavor, on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays, the Remote Learning Academy has added ten minutes of additional class time for each of their core subjects. A thirty five minute AM tutorial where students will have live time with teachers for extra help and guidance. And a fifty minute PM tutorial for the same purposes as the AM tutorial. And then on Wednesdays, we've added two hours and ten minute period called synchronous learning is directed by the team, a period that will provide students additional engagement time with their teachers as well as their peers. These schedules went out to our Remote Learning Academy and their families just yesterday. And then finally, finally have somewhat of a positive update for our hundred and ninety two Chromebooks that we've continued to be waiting for all year. We have been informed by our vendor that the outstanding Chromebooks that were due for our elementary schools are on their way. So we are hoping to receive them by the by month's end and get them into our elementary schools so that all of our three to five students have access to an individual device of their own. Our technology team is ready for this shipment and arrival and is working hard to make sure they're able to inventory them and get the devices up and running as soon as we receive them.
Great. Any questions of Dr. McGuire before I go after the last topic? Leah?
Leah?
So could you guys just explain to someone like myself who doesn't have personal experience with? So could you guys just explain to someone like myself who doesn't have personal experience with the RLA? Why sixth grade and not seventh, eighth grade?
Because those teachers were handling all sixth, seventh and eighth. And so we were able to hire on a few more teachers to just focus on the sixth grade level so we could further personalize and separate out the grade levels, decrease the class sizes is all.
But they're not getting different teachers, they're just adding in?
They're getting, we hired two, two new teachers for the sixth grade level. So yes, they are.
Okay.
Joel, did you want to respond to that too?
I might be able to, yeah.
Well, just, just to add that philosophically, we felt that there was enough of a difference from the sixth grade developmental perspective than there was from the seventh and eighth grade that it, it, it made sense to us to, and the team to go in that direction. And so the, the teachers that were hired are a humanities teacher teaching the ELA and social studies classes and STEM teacher teaching the math and science sections. And it allows them the opportunity not only to sort of have that micro program within the program that's more developmentally appropriate. It, it, it also provides the integration possibilities for ELA and social studies together or math and science.
And then more resources are pushed up, right? Because then you're freeing up the current teacher's time to concentrate on the older kids.
Exactly.
Yes.
It's the gift of time.
And manpower.
Any other questions for Pat?
Okay, the last topic.
Beg your pardon?
Last.
Did somebody?
I just said, thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
The last topic for me is the NRHS principal search. The process for the NRHS principal search is ongoing. We're in the process of organizing and training the search committee. I'm going to turn this over to Anne Marie Stoica here in a minute, our director of HR. A schedule for the remainder of the process has been created with potential upcoming dates. The candidate profile has now been written based on the feedback that we received through the surveys and the forums. And our HR director, Anne Marie, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Brooke, and happy new year, everybody. I last updated you on the principal search before the holidays on December 16th. At that time, the focus groups and the online survey had been completed and NASDAQ was continuing to accept applications from candidates. Our NASDAQ consultants used the information from the surveys and from the focus groups to develop a candidate profile document that sets out the experiences, skills, values and education that the focus group and the survey participants identified as being important for us to look for in the principal. So now the application period is closed and we received a very good number of applicants. Our screening committee is convening next week when the committee will participate in an orientation and training with our NASDAQ person. And then each member will individually conduct a confidential evaluation of each candidate using the candidate profile that reflected the wishes of the participants in the survey and the focus group and what our next principal should be. Using that information, the group is going to get the search committee will get back together again and decide which of the candidates to invite for an interview, and that's all going to happen next week. The following week, which is the last week of the month, the search committee will interview the ones that they've identified as being the ones that they would like to interview. In early February, the next step, they've had the interviews now and the selection, the search committee has set forward three or four finalists. The next step after that will be in early February. After the finalists are named and announced, we'll have any interested faculty, staff, parent or student will have an opportunity to meet each of the finalists. They'll have a chance to submit and have the finalists respond to their questions. And then it'll be like in a round robin format. At the end of which, the participants will be able to let us know their input as to which of the candidates they believe is the strongest candidate for their support and how come. You know, why they think that's the strongest candidate. And also to give any suggestions as to further questions they think the superintendent should consider when she takes the next. Finalists will interview separately with the superintendent. She'll do reference checks, possible site visits. And then before they, she finally makes an offer to the successful candidate. So then the process will be complete. So fingers crossed, we should have a new high school principal by the end of February. It's all falling into place. It's all according to the schedule originally that we set out. And we're doing, we're doing well, COVID notwithstanding. There we go.
Thank you.
Any questions for Anne Marie? No? Great. Thank you. And that's my report tonight.
Thank you so much. Have an opportunity to ask questions of Brooke specific to items in her report. I'm not seeing any more questions, so I will move on to unfinished business. Some of the items under unfinished business and new business are things that have been rescheduled from our December 16th meeting. And one of those items has to do with the Lancaster listening session that I think was on December 7th. Sharon is going to report out on that for us.
Yes, so the Lancaster committee representatives had a listening session on the 7th of December, which feels like forever ago by now. We had 40 parents who attended or 40 people who attended. There were a handful that were residents that of the town or that do not have children. And the remainder were parents with children anywhere from pre-K to 12. So we asked parents when they pre-registered to send any questions that they had, if they could, ahead of time so that we would be sure to have answers for as many questions as possible during the session. And those answers were included in a packet of information that was sent along with the zoom link for the meeting. So that information, hopefully a lot of those questions or that information was available before we even started. And then chose to start the meeting with some education for parents around the roles and responsibilities of the school committee and also an orientation to the NRSD website and the information that is available there. And then we opened up the meeting for questions, comments and discussion. And the general takeaways from that, people came to the meeting with thoughtful feedback. They were thoughtful in the way that they stated their, their feedback. They were looking for support and they were offering support to one another as well. Parents were grateful for the opportunity to be heard and to ask questions and to hear what other people were thinking and were experiencing. There was a recognition of and gratitude for the work that has been done to get us to this point. Especially grateful for the work that the teachers have done and continue to do. We had an opportunity to hear feedback regarding each of the learning models. For parents of children in the hybrid model, they were, they're grateful for their children to be at school, for the opportunity for their children to be at school two days a week. But uniformly stated that the remote days are challenging for their children. They, the feedback was that there are assignments, but there's not interaction with the teachers and that it's hard to build and maintain momentum. And they were looking for more instructional support for their children on those days. Parents of the high school children primarily seem to be looking for opportunities for their children to have social contact. The concerns with the remote learning did not seem to be as focused on academics, but were really focused on children not having opportunities to meet classmates or to have interactions with them. And that was especially true for students of freshmen or students in their freshman year who have not had an opportunity yet to make connections with peers from Bolton and. We received a lot of positive feedback for the RLA at the elementary and middle school level. Parents expressed that that was going very well. They were happy with that. Other feedback included a wish for more communication from the district and for clear answers to questions. But there was also recognition that although we wish for definitive answers, in many cases, it's not possible. Part of the discussion was our encouragement of parents to get in touch with teachers or principals if they have concerns and, and to really work with, with the schools if they have concerns or needed more additional or social support. And then we followed with the survey to get feedback about the session. About 75% of the participants in the session responded to that survey. So we were able to get some good feedback about their perspective on how things went. And we're hoping that we'll be able to set up another one soon. And did I cover everything, Brett and Joe?
I think you did. Brett, Joseph, anything else? You get the thumbs up from Brett.
All right.
No, well, thanks. I think that even though it happened a month and a half ago, I think it was a really good experience. People were appreciative of the effort and I certainly was appreciative of our, our ability to get together as the Lancaster reps and to hear from constituents. And, and just to emphasize that it was, this was a, an open invitation, pre-K 12 and also to members of the community. It was gratifying that people without kids came and, and listened and be good if we could follow up in a little way. But I have to give Sharon a lot of credit because some of, some of us, I'm not going to mention any names. We're dragging our feet about doing us and she, doing this. And she just kicked us all in the butt and got us all organized and boom, there you have it. So thanks for your leadership, Sharon. We appreciate it. Okay, any questions for Sharon, Rich, or for any of us, Rich?
I just, I just had a comment. I thought that your survey and the way you ran it was something, I think, the crew and still could let's look, could draw upon. I think it was good to see some concrete data and comments. So cheers to you guys.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Joseph?
Thank you, ma'am chairman. Just two very quick comments. I wanted to just echo what Ms. Park said about the parents and the comments about the RLA and the hybrid. And to compliment the administration, we did get a lot of positive comments about how the RLA is working. And as a parent of a child who's in the RLA, I can echo those sentiments. The one thing that I did take away from the, actually two things I took away from the session was, one of them was, again, some of the parents were seeking more rigor in regards to the hybrid program. And on a more personal note, I, I do want to sort of echo a sentiment that was raised at the meeting. And it's, this is a sentiment directed specifically to those people who live in Lancaster that, you know, they do not have to wait for a listening session to speak to us either collectively or individually. When I say collectively, the four representatives from Lancaster. One of the things that I brought up during the meeting was, you know, we don't have a lot of targeted inquiry in regards to, you know, where we stand on certain issues and why we voted a certain way. So I do want to, you know, echo that point again to my people in Lancaster that, you know, if you have questions, if you have concerns, you know, we're available via, you know, email, Zoom, however you want to meet with us, talk with us, telephone. So that's all I want to say, ma'am chairman.
Thank you, Joseph. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, thanks, everyone. The next item is a Trittown discussion and I asked Elaine if she would speak to this again. This is a carryover from the December 16th meeting. Elaine?
Yes, and so we actually are going back to the December 2nd meeting. For the, for the context here, so concerns around Trittown started in the fall, but I'll jump to our December 2nd meeting where we had a discussion about how we wanted to proceed with Trittown moving forward. And at the end of that discussion during the meeting, we basically said we needed more time to discuss, which was fine. So we moved it to the December 16th agenda. In the meantime, though, the Bolton Select Board had sent a letter to us saying in part, we will assume your participation in the Trittown meeting on December 9th. So I felt if the respectful thing to do was to send some sort of response to say, we didn't finish our discussion on December 2nd, we need more time to do it. Therefore, you know, we won't be participating in the December 9th Trittown meeting. And so for the purposes of transparency, I thought I would read for the community the email that I had sent in return. It says, Dear members of the Trittown Committee, in a letter to the school committee dated November 30th, 2020, the Bolton Board of Selectmen offered their perspective and feedback on future participation in Trittown meetings. Included in that was the stated assumption that the school committee would participate in the December 9th, 2020 Trittown meeting. The school committee met on December 20th, December 2nd, 2020 to deliberate. And while we had a rich discussion, we felt we needed more time to continue the conversation on a later date, likely our next meeting on December 16th, 2020, but that agenda is not finalized yet. Therefore, we agreed to respectfully decline participation in the December 9th, 2020 Trittown meeting. Individuals, of course, are always welcome to attend as residents. During our discussion, there was general agreement that the purpose of Trittown was sharing information and communication, and we agreed those are worthy goals. We discussed other venues for potentially advancing those goals during this interim period, including meetings with our specific towns, meetings between town administrators and school district personnel, and informal one-on-one communication with individual members of various boards. We will continue to work diligently to chart a path through this global pandemic. I hope that over time, we can forge stronger relationships built solidly on mutual respect. Please understand that we share your commitment to the betterment of our towns and their residents' lives. So sincerely, Elaine Sanflebo. So then when we got to the December 16th meeting, that was a really long and really intense meeting. And we ended up saying, we're not going to talk about this tonight, we'll move it to today. So that is the lead up to where we are right now. Just continuing that discussion and right now it's open-ended. There's no particular goal or outcome that, or deadline that we're looking to achieve here. So I guess it's back to Kathy for just open discussion.
I do have a question. Did you receive a response to your letter, Elaine?
To be honest, December, let's see, I said this on December 8th and that feels like a year ago. So I don't, I don't remember.
It was last year.
Yes. If it, if it was, I don't think it was anything particularly that would need to be shared in a meeting like this that would advance the conversation here. But if other people are giving comments, I can go check through my emails to see if I did get a response.
Did, and, and you know, again, once again, I'm looking at an agenda that is packed. We have a number of action, action required items. And I do think we need to have time to discuss. But we, it's already eight o'clock and the next item is the student learning time. And, and you know, folks can look at the agenda. I, I'd like to get a sense from folks if they want to have a, allow for more time for consideration and conversation. And if that's the case, then I think we would need to move this to another agenda. Again, I'm looking at the decisions we have to make tonight. This is an information-only item in terms of seeing where folks are. We could move it to the 27th and allow more time. Hopefully we have less things on the docket for then. So I'd like to hear what folks on the committee think. Rich?
Okay. I'd like to move to postpone this agenda item till the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, so Rich moved to postpone it. Who seconded?
Joseph.
Okay. Discussion, questions? Mike, I see your hand.
Yeah, there is, there is nobody that wants to taint the clock more than I do with these meetings that feel like they're going to last seven or eight hours, but. But um it now feels like we are just kicking the can down further. And it's going to be upwards of two months since this topic has emerged. And as time goes on, uh and the discussions amongst school committee members and amongst uh Trittown members, it feels like this this row is becoming increasingly petty and frankly, counterproductive. I don't think it benefits parents. I don't think it res- uh benefits the town uh or residents. In fact, I think it only serves to create more dividing lines. So my position hasn't changed from when we talked about this uh last year, which was uh we just need to get back to Trittown because um they represent uh a certain faction of our community, just like the school committee does. And there needs to be far more collaboration.
Thank you. Other comments, Leah?
I was just gonna say quickly that this feels like something that we could perhaps task a subcommittee with. And um I would volunteer myself as the chair of the policy comit- subcommittee, if you guys think it's appropriate. But uh in the spirit of reaching out, creating uh some sort of a solution that encourages cooperation and conversation. Or perhaps the communications subcommittee wants to take it, but I'm willing to do a little bit of legwork outside of these meetings. If you guys want me to.
Thank you, Leah. Um other comments, Steve?
Yes, in the letter that we sent to them after the disastrous Trittown meeting, we asked them to come forward and sit and talk with us about putting together a new, perhaps feeling or a new atmosphere or a new relationship structure about that. And as far as I know, we have heard nothing back from them. So as far as I'm concerned, the ball is in their court, not ours.
Thank you. Other questions or comments, Rich?
I would support Leah's uh suggestion. I think, you know, in the spirit of what even said, you know, we did ask for them for suggestions and they rebuffed us. But, you know, in the spirit of what Mike Horace said as well, let's let's put together some ideas and send it to them, right? And and then that way, we'll move the the conversation forward. I will say, from a straight incentive, as somebody who attended the last Trittown and spoke on it, I will say um I it not attending the Trittown, it seems to incentivize the type of behavior that we wanted to. I I would point to uh an email that was sent to one of the Lancaster members from the Bolton Selectmen. We're pressing information about the budget. And to my knowledge, this person's never reached out to anybody but the coat, but but Kathy and and wasn't satisfied with um with Kathy's answer. So to me, that is a step forward. And I've seen it in other areas, too. I see a very productive relationship with the Bolton Selectmen and um and the Bolton reps. And I know that the Stowe reps are to me. So to me, I I I'm not saying that we shouldn't go back to Trittown. But by not going to Trittown, we are getting the behavior that we want, which is for them to go through the channels that they need to, to get the information. And I'll just give one example. I know that the uh the Bolton um Selectmen had raised questions about why the audit was not on the website or latest audit was on the website for the NRSD. And they even speculated wildly, in my opinion, about, well, they must not be doing the uh the audit. Or, you know, we've got to check to see if they've done the audit. This is something that could have just been done in a simple email to Pat or just the superintendent. I found it myself. Uh I know that um uh Elaine found it as well. She was the the uh the NRSD audit advisory person. So this is, this is working now, in my opinion. They're going through the proper channels. You know, we do have to seem to feed it to them still and some of them is doing their own searches. But at least they're going through the right channels. So I fully support uh trying to get back to it. I I think Leah is the right person to to lead this. I'll even volunteer a part of it. But um uh, you know, I think the type of behavior we're looking for is is it's working.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Um Sharon?
Is there another um Trittown meeting scheduled? Does anybody know?
I'm not aware. Anyone else?
And do we, I know that in December, the Stowe Board of Selectmen had opted out. Is that correct?
I think so.
So maybe we need to wait and, yes, so maybe we need to wait and see kind of what's going to come of that.
Another meeting, Kathy.
I can't see who's talking. Who's, who wants?
I'm sorry, it's me, Rich.
Oh, okay, Rich, go ahead.
I was gonna say, yeah, I don't know whose turn it is. I mean, I know the Selectmen opted out the last one because they didn't feel any of the agenda items were germane to 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 the town of Stowe. But um I know that in the last meeting, which I participated in, they they scheduled another meeting. I think it's coming up pretty soon. Maybe Mike knows. Or Amy.
Thank you. Mike, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I would just um I would add one more thing. Um it seems like we have this 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 sort of unspoken policy of of intransigence. And I would just, I I'm just wondering myself, and I would wonder from my colleagues, maybe rhetorically, what if, what exactly is our endgame here? And what what if we are, if we are not um actively trying to pursue um uh a reasonable solution, where does this lead us? And I don't see that it leads us anywhere positive.
If I could comment, if if um Amy, do you mind if I comment?
Fine.
All right. Um so I think Steve actually hit the nail on the head. I think that going back to October fourteenth and that meeting, it uh it it was um not what we have experienced before. Mike, you used the word um, the terms um petty and counterproductive. I I'm, I was so taken aback by the lack of respect for this school committee. Um and for myself, and for quite honestly, that was on display. And the only person there that really called anyone out on it was Mary McCarthy. I know it's difficult to to and and I felt, you know, maybe I was, I've been in middle school too long. But I felt that there was some bullying behavior going on. And I think that the 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 letter that we put together um was an attempt to say, look, um, this, this doesn't feel right for us. These are some things we want to do. And and um uh there was no response to that. So I feel that we've made an effort. I'm constantly wondering what the purpose of it is. There is no stated purpose. There's no protocols. It has no um, I I I I don't know what the right word is, but there's nothing that codifies it. And so I think that um what I I find appealing is, um at this point, is is Leah's suggestion that instead of trying to um do this as a whole committee, to have a subcommittee perhaps between policy and communication, look at it. But I am very uncomfortable going back into a situation where there was no acknowledgement that what happened was inappropriate, disrespectful, dishonest, untrue. And there was nothing that moderated um so that um information could be shared. There were so many unsubstantiated claims. And it it was not a good feeling on my part. I don't know about the rest of you. And uh um so I'm I I I'm reluctant to enter back in unless that there is some understanding of even appropriate norms for discussing things. Because I'm not feeling that. But I am open, I'm always open, to trying to build a bridge. And so um I would, we have a motion on the table to uh discuss this further. If we want to um reconsider that motion. And Joseph, I need your expertise here on the Roberts rules. To instead um uh charge the, perhaps the policy committee to work with communication to to uh come up with. I don't even know what, how you would classify it. Uh but I would say build a bridge so that if the Trittown meetings are respectful and productive um and and whatever else we want to say. So I'm I'm kind of um perplexed, I guess, at this point. But I will not put myself in a position to be subjected to that kind of disrespectful behavior again. Joseph?
Yeah, well, Madam Chairman, just a point of order. Uh Mr. Echol does have a motion on the table and it has been seconded. So uh unless Mr. Echol wants to withdraw that motion, I think we're uh in in we're committed to pursuing what Mr. Echol has suggested, which is to table this matter. But I don't think that would preclude us from further moving on matters, painting to what you had just said, which would be to task the policy and the communications subcommittee to form a joint task force to discuss the whole issue of our continued participation at uh at Trittown.
Thank you. I I see Amy had her hand up and now Mary too. Go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. Um few things. I I fully support Leah's proposition to form a subcommittee or a task force to work on a solution. Because, you know, I feel like these Trittown meetings are going to continue whether we want to attend them or not. And every time we don't attend, I think we do ourselves a disservice. Because misinformation just continues to, we 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 create an opportunity for misinformation to be publicly stated. And we're, we're, we're turning away an opportunity to share information. So, you know, I I would support creating this task force so we can figure out how, how we can move forward to find a way to attend these meetings.
Thank you.
Just very quickly, the other thing I wanted to bring up is I think that the Bolton Selectmen's letter that Elaine referred to was a response to our, the letter that we sent them. I I think that's, it's been a while, but I think that's why we got a letter of response from them.
It it was to the original letter, but the letter basically said, we reject what you're suggesting and
Thanks.
Um Mary?
So one thing I learned about withdrawing a motion is that if I make a motion and I decide to withdraw it before it has gone to the chair and the chair has reiterated and it's been seconded, I can, I can withdraw that motion. However, once it's gone to the chair, then it takes um the vote of the committee, two-thirds of the committee, to withdraw it. So we haven't been doing that correctly. However, we could make an amendment um to Rich's motion to say that we would um talk, you know, I think you said that we would talk about this at the next meeting. And I'm just wondering if we could do this. So we'll, I'll ask um Joe's opinion on this. And um create a a subcommittee. And so we just add, add on to it. Now, perhaps we talk about this at the next meeting when uh people have had a little bit more time to think about this. But I don't think we necessarily have to withdraw the motion. Or if we do, then you just call for a vote and we have, if two-thirds of the committee says withdraw it, then we withdraw it and just have a whole new motion for um the subcommittee. So.
Go ahead, take Steve first, please.
Okay, you're 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 saying about withdrawing a motion, but it would be a simple majority to reject the motion.
It might be quicker to just reject the motion.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, Rich?
I'm willing to amend the motion. I I just don't even know that we really need to even do that. If if a subcommittee wants to take up the mantle of of doing this, do we even really need to direct them? They couldn't they just make it an agenda item and bring it forward at the next meeting?
I think I can up up um appoint um a task force to do this. I don't think it requires a vote. Joseph, can I just appoint an ad hoc committee?
Yes.
Without, it does not require a vote, correct?
No.
Okay. So that, what's the quickest way out of this to for Rich to withdraw his motion or what, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, I I by the technical terms of the the rules of order, uh Dr. McCrady is correct. But i- if Mr. Echol wants to withdraw his motion, I'm sure, I don't think anybody on this committee, I mean, maybe I'm wrong. But I mean, if Mr. Echol decides he wants to withdraw the motion, I doubt there's going to be any objection to it. So if he wants to simply withdraw it, there's a, we have consent of the the body, there shouldn't be any procedural issue in that regard.
Rich?
Uh I guess the only thing I'd say is I I actually tend to agree with Mary. I looked into this pretty closely. And I think I remember from our our training that once you do put the motion, it's seconded. It's, it is the committee's discharge. So maybe, you know.
Let's just, if if there are no objection.
Hold on, we can amend the motion. This is where I'm going. Why don't I just amend the motion to postpone it to the next meeting? And uh or is that, and uh, you know.
So we have to, we have to vote on the the amendment. I'm trying to end this.
I say we just vote to postpone the matter, the discussion to the next meeting. And then we have a second amendment to direct Leah's committee to deal with that. That's my suggestion.
Let me ask you this, Joe. If we table the motion, do we have to vote to table it?
Yes, yeah.
All right. So if we vote to table the motion and we don't pick it up during this meeting, it goes away until the next meeting, correct?
Correct.
No, it goes, it goes away.
But we can bring it back at the next meeting.
I mean.
Why don't we just reject the motion?
Okay, let's.
Period. Is that the cleanest way, Joe?
You can do it. I, no, actually, I think the cleanest way for for Mr. Echol to s- uh to express his sentiment that he wishes leave of the committee to withdraw his motion. I don't think anybody on this committee at this point is going to object to Mr. Echol withdrawing his motion. So if we want to move off of this motion, my recommendation, my directive would be, Mr. Echol, simply seek leave of the committee to withdraw your motion.
Right.
Is that amenable to you, Mr. Echol?
So so moved, although it seems like.
No, it's not so moved.
I think we, I think we still need Mary to uh, I think we still need to vote on it, but Mary, um perhaps.
That's.
Mary?
That's exactly what I was going to say. So then just do a roll call vote. And we, you know, and then thanking Rich very much for his motion. We're going to also thank him for withdrawing it and say yes, as as Joe was saying. But we're doing it the right way if we get a sense of the committee and just call us.
Okay. Those in favor of postponing the discussion until uh the twenty-seventh indicate yea or nay. A nay vote means that we will not have it as an agenda item on the next agenda unless there is the desire to do so at another time. Yes means that we will have it as an agenda, on the agenda for next week to discuss. Is everybody clear on what you're voting for, Mary?
No.
No.
Because we're, we're voting, we're voting um yes to go along with what Rich has just said, that he's withdrawing his motion, his motion.
But I didn't say he was withdrawing the motion. Are you withdrawing the motion?
Yes.
Yes, he is withdrawing the motion. So do we have to vote on that?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Rich, all those in favor of Rich withdrawing the motion, I will
Roll call.
The roll. Okay, this. I'm gonna start with me and I'm gonna say I'm voting in favor of withdrawing the motion. And then Amy. Yes. And then Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah? Yes. Okay, so now I would like to um based on the uh suggestion that Leah made, charge Leah and her policy subcommittee to be a task force and to hopefully work with um other members or another committee And to hopefully work with um, other members or another committee Uh, to who um, I I think I wrote down what the idea was. Um, Um, to put together a plan so that we would be able to um, Um, be comfortable working with the Triton committee. Leah, you put it more succinctly than that. So is that?
That sounds great. I think that I'm gonna need some guidance probably from you Around like Rules and things of that sort, but maybe we can just touch base offline.
Right, and it would be an ad hoc committee, not one of our regular committees, with a specific task. And then um, once that task is complete, the committee would dissolve.
And so it's not, it's not actually the policy subcommittee. It's a different ad hoc committee.
Okay, right. So um, do we need to vote on that, Joe?
No, but I I would like to ask a question when you're done.
I'm done.
Oh, you're done. Okay. Well, not a question, it's more of a comment. Um, And if we, if you're going to appoint an ad hoc committee To study this particular issue of our return or not to Triton. One of the things that, and and one of the comments that I would make is, is that If you do the math, if you look at, if you look at the the mathematics of it, there are five select board members in Still, three in Bolton, three in Lancaster. And I understand that number reaches eleven, which Amazingly is the same number of members on this committee. So one of the issues that's that's been at the back of my mind or the front of my mind for the longest time is where do we stand at Triton? Are we members of Triton? So if we're going to Put together an ad hoc committee, I I would ask, or I would vehemently request that, You know, that any discussion that we have going forward in regards to Triton Includes our inclusion as a member of the body of Triton. And that's eleven B eleven, and I think it makes for a very fair and equitable uh, committee. Uh, but according to the men, the letter that we received from the town of Bolton, they're under at least under the impression, At least that's the impression I got, that we are members. So if Triton is going to be this, that, you know, we're going to a twenty-two member body for Triton. And I I think that's the 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 priority, it should be the priority Of any ad hoc committee. Otherwise, we're going back and we're just, if we're not a member of the, if we're not a member, Then we're just asking them to impose, you know, or put it, to enact their own rule, the rules of order, Which they've sort of already indicated they're not interested in doing at this point. So that's just my comment on on the ad hoc.
But back to to Mike's point, I think we we are making a good fake effort. We we thought that's what we were doing when we wrote the letter back in October. Um, but um, I I I think that this, what you're talking about and some of the other points that folks have brought up could be something that the task force Looks at, and Leah, I appreciate your your willingness to take the lead on this. Uh, Amy?
I just have a question about an ad hoc committee and many members. Um, whether we need to be concerned or limit memberships so as to avoid a qu- a quorum?
Yeah, it'd be less than, it'd be five at the most. So it's not a quorum of the school committee. Okay. Yes, Leah?
So I think that um, every good study starts with kind of a lit review, so I'm gonna put on my historian hat and say that Thing that that's probably the beginning is just trying to, like Joe said, Get a handle on the big picture and try to kind of investigate origin, its origin story. And um, that sort of thing, and then, you know, get all interested parties together so that we can construct something That is better codified. And my last comment is, I will do it by myself, but I welcome others to join me.
So if you are interested in a committee recognizing that the limit would be five, Uh, please get in touch with Leah, and Leah, you and I can connect um, offline and sort of uh, uh, talk about a framework. And again, I appreciate the 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 time and 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 concern that folks have um, Have expressed, and I'm very appreciative uh, to your leadership, Leah, and and um, trying to build a bridge Uh, to Triton. Anything else for the good of the order on this topic? Seeing none, we will move on to student learning time. And I will turn it over to Brooke and to Todd.
Great, thanks. I I'll just basically tee it up, and um, I know that Joan is here uh, to support the ongoing discussion, as is Martina, uh, who helps to oversee our teaching and learning. Uh, Kyle Grady is here, principal of Hale. I saw Rossmo Karen is here as well, and Laura Friend and Joel Bates. Uh, so we've got a quite a group. I hope I didn't miss anything because the screen started to share, so I'm not, I couldn't see everybody. So I'm hoping that I've got everyone here. And so we want to give you a bit of a timeline of how this all kind of came about. Um, how it differentiates from what we were, the guidance we were given in the summer. And then basically how we look and at moving forward with this and where it's at. And there seems to be some confusion out there too about how the numbers are, were arrived at. So uh, I think that Dr. McGuire is going to explain a bit, a bit of a snapshot of all of that tonight. So Dr. McGuire, I'm going to turn it over to you and to our principals.
Sure. So yeah, I want to thank everyone um, for joining tonight. This really has been a team Effort in terms of making sense of these new regulations, uh, making sense of what synchronous learning time is, how it's defined. Um, so the only one who's not able to join us tonight is Principal O'Shea, because he is working as a school committee member in his own district With the same exact topics tonight. So um, he sends his very best that he in that and um, That that he couldn't be here. So um, just to um, give some context to To all of this, keep in mind that, you know, these regulations and the idea of these new regulations came down in mid, in mid-December. They still continue to be all really, you know, somewhat new to us as we continue to unpack them. Um, the guidance certainly came out um, after that, um, after a meeting with the superintendents to to indicate Where they were moving with this, and so we continue to still comb through, through the guidance, ask a lot of questions. Um, we've been in touch with Desi a number of times. There's been a number of iterations of this data To get clarification um, on 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 learning time in the different models that we have um, have in the district. So we're just going to give um, some background in terms of where we started, And then in terms of where we are, and then the the real, the goal Here is to really be looking forward, and you'll see the word draft on this presentation, because we're certainly, you know, Um, looking for your feedback as well. Um, as as part of this too, these regulations do go into effect next Tuesday, And we've been working really hard um, on trying to look at our schedules With the times that we have within our hybrids and our remote models. Uh, for example, the Remote Learning Academy that I just explained to you, we've been working hard on that as well. So Um, and then each one of our principals at the different levels, Um, as well as Joan De Angelis with um, Special Education and Pupil Personnel Can can chime in and hopefully answer some of your questions. So Just to start in terms of some background, you'll remember that this past summer, all districts Um, in Massachusetts were required to create relearning plans for this school year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, Which were to include a remote plan, a hybrid plan, and a full return plan. Um, with that, they required all districts to to make sure that they were Giving five point five hours of learning time. That was the requirement uh, per day. At the time, that could be a mix of asynchronous and synchronous learning time. There were also, you know, significant concerns that were raised back then Um, and continue to be raised about screen time. So there were lots of questions raised about is six hours of screen time, You know, in a full remote model, really what's best for students. And so I know our district prioritized to make sure that we were giving a blend and a balance of asynchronous And synchronous learning time in the schedules that we provided and in the models that we provided. Um, our plans were then submitted to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in August. Um, and with that, our K through eight went to hybrid, and our nine through twelve went to full remote. And you folks were all a big part of those conversations as well as those decisions. So in the fall of twenty twenty and late fall, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asked all districts to Uh, report out the amount of synchronous learning time in each of the implemented models for each school district. So our team is meant to identify the specific amounts of asynchronous and synchronous learning time That were offered in grades one, four, seven, and ten, and that is what the department asked us to look at, those four different grade levels. And then in December, the commissioner held a call with uh, all superintendents, assistant superintendents To outline their next steps and ensuring that students' social emotional needs were being met And put forth a proposal of required synchronous learning time for each implemented model in each district. And it's really important to reiterate that their objective really here was making sure that the social emotional learning For students and the needs were being met. Um, it really wasn't focused around academic time. It really was focused on that interaction Between teachers and students, students with adults, as well as with each other. Um, because they were seeing an uptick in levels of anxiety and stress, uh, suicidal ideation, et cetera. And that was the major goal and for to, for districts to really begin looking at How we were meeting those needs and how we can further meet those needs of making those one-on-one interactions Um, between teachers and students and that kind of community building. So here, apologize if I included um, some slides from the Desi presentation that was a part of our initial meeting, And then a part of a number of our workshops and webinars over the past month, month or so. Um, these new student learning time regulations were adopted by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education on December fifteenth. That was a week after the first initial phone call with the commissioner that superintendents had. Those new regulations were passed and are effective as of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, those regulations are legally binding, and so noncompliance um, without a waiver would result in needing to make up The necessary structured learning time by the end of the school year. So just to give you the specifics and what these amended regulations are that will go into effect in January On the nineteenth next week, for any hybrid models, there are two regulations. All hybrid models must provide a minimum of thirty-five hours of live instruction over a ten school day period Averaged across the grades within that hybrid model. And I want to echo that average component because in the show, but One through eight, we are in hybrid. So with the data that we submit, they take the average. So you might take a look at our middle school where kids might be getting a little bit more, and at the elementary level, it might be a little bit less. And when they take that data, they average it, and they average um, across that particular model as well as subgroups within that model. Um, and I'll talk about that a little bit more too. That second regulation is also a daily live check-in with students, which will be required on all school days. So if you're in a hybrid model and the students are at home, there is a required daily live check-in For students with teachers, which is now required. We have been doing that in this district, but that is also another requirement. And just to point out that a grade level within a school will be considered hybrid if All students have the opportunity to attend school in person some of the time, Even though some have, some might have chosen to opt out, and that is, you know, that is what's going on in our district for our hybrid model. The amended SLT regulations for a fully remote model, again, there are two regulations here. All fully remote models must provide a minimum of forty hours of synchronous instruction over a ten school day period. Again, averaged across the grades in the fully remote model. So in our case, it would be averaged across nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. And then a fully remote uh, regulation number two is that all fully remote models must include synchronous instruction Each school day. So kids in full remote must have that synchronous instruction, live teacher-to-student Um, contact every single one of those days. So you couldn't necessarily just do synchronous instruction Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, And all asynchronous Thursday, Friday in a remote model. There needs to be live synchronous instruction Each of the days um, of the week. And a grade level within a school will be considered as fully remote if not all students have the opportunity to attend school in person some of the time. And we know that in our district up until March one, that is the case, because we made um, the decision to go Hybrid at the high school as of March first, twenty twenty-one. And then I also just wanted to provide the definition of synchronous learning. Um, there still are a lot of questions around this, um, and I've I've been in a number of webinars with a variety of uh, district leaders Um, that continue to ask questions on what constitutes um, uh, synchronous Live instruction. Um, they define it as learning that, uh, they define it as learning that is directed by a teacher And that happens in real time with other students, such as during live, whole class instruction and small group work. What they are counting as synchronous instruction would be live online classes, Live streaming, as well as small group instruction. What does not count as synchronous instruction would be office hours or other optional check-in opportunities. So Prior to this guidance coming out, a lot of districts were counting office hours As synchronous instruction because it provided students the opportunity to have one-on-one time With their, with their teachers and with their instructors. And so that is something that a lot of districts had to go back in And either make some changes or ask for clarification around um, either office hours or one-on-one meetings Uh, with teachers or guidance counselors, et cetera. Um, so that's, that that was one uh, piece that we did a lot of asking Um, questions about and making sure that um, we are in line with the new regulations on that. So in terms of the feedback from the Department of Education, again, Um, our elementary grades were uh, found to be needing uh, two additional hours or a hundred and twenty minutes Uh, synchronous live learning time over a two-week period. Um, our middle schools were found to be in compliance with the hybrid learning model. And our high school uh, was found to be in compliance with the remote learning model. Um, however, you'll see that moving forward, uh, we are adding another hour Uh, because we do recognize that a lot of the time that we were putting into the high school model Um, was either considered some office hour time or the one-on-one uh, check-ins with teachers Because teachers are available for live synchronous instruction and meetings all day. Um, so we did seek some um, clarification from uh, the Department of Ed on that. And then our special education um, students are meeting and exceeding the SLT expel, SLT expectations because our special education students are coming in four days a week For six hours um, of live instruction, as well as some other sub-subgroups, including some ELL students. Um, and so those subgroups are also averaged into um, our SLT time as well. And so we do know that our special education students are getting a tremendous amount of in-person live um, synchronous instruction Um, in addition. So our next steps, um, and we've been obviously working with um, our teams Is really the opportunity to increase um, our synchronous learning time. So principals at each level have met with the teaching and learning team As well as Joan De Angelis, the Special Education Department, to develop ways to increase synchronous learning time across the district. Um, our current schedules that we have been using since the start of the school year Have been reviewed and teams meant to plan according to the new regulations that will be effective next Tuesday. And so the next several slides speak to the individual Um, Grade levels, and so I'll walk you through those slides, and then I know that our Principals are here, as well as Martina Canyon, our curriculum director, and Joan De Angelis to be able to address any of the specifics as well. Uh, but in grades uh, one through five, the goal here is to add an additional hundred and twenty minutes over two weeks That is needed for each of the hybrid cohort. That would be about sixty minutes per week. And so the plan uh, moving forward is to create some simultaneous morning meeting and classroom community meeting time, Keeping in mind that the objective of the Department of Ed is really focused on that social emotional learning component. So that would involve morning check-ins with morning meetings and announcements, social emotional learning activities, As well as preview or review of asynchronous work, as well as an afternoon check-in for all students at the same time simultaneously. Those students who are in school, as well as those schools, kids, students who are at home Uh, for a review of the day and to bring kind of that whole community together. We've also come up with some other synchronous opportunities that would um, Be considered with at-home students meeting with their classroom teacher, as well as increase our Wednesday timing of synchronous learning time. At the middle school level, the goal is to continue to maximize synchronous learning time and expand it at the middle school level And offer additional time for students and teachers to connect during remote days. That plan moving forward would be that each middle school would maximize opportunities appropriate to its respective hybrid schedule. These opportunities are including synchronous homerooms to provide support and previews of the day, objectives for the day, objectives for the day, synchronous tutorial time to provide supportive academic content and social emotional connections at midday, as well as at the end of the day, and then extended synchronous class time on those remote Wednesdays. I spoke about the Remote Learning Academy earlier, that those schedules just went out yesterday to those families. And as I indicated, we increased the synchronous learning time tremendously in that model. Because the Remote Learning Academy is not the dominant model, districts are actually not required to meet the minimum forty-hour requirement for synchronous remote learning because it's not considered the dominant model. Our hybrid model is considered the dominant model for our one through eight. However, with the addition of the new teachers that I spoke of earlier and the ability to develop more synchronous learning time, we will be able to meet that requirement moving forward. And as, just to repeat what I indicated earlier, that would be ten minutes of additional time for each of our core subjects each day, a thirty-five-minute AM tutorial for live time with teachers, a fifty-minute PM tutorial time for the same purpose as the AM tutorial, and that's for Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And then on Wednesday, we've added a two-hour and ten-minute period called synchronous learning as directed by the teacher team. So that's what we've done to the Remote Learning Academy schedule to even make sure that we are meeting the forty hours in a remote setting for those kids. And then finally, the high school, and as I mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we are in four synchronous learning time hours in the disciplines, and Steve is here, then he can speak to that as well. But we've added one entire class period per day to make sure the synchronous learning meets the forty-hour requirement. And additionally, ten minutes from each asynchronous class each day will also be dedicated to live instruction with the instructor and the teacher. And this actually is that schedule. Steve and his team, John Crowell, Janine Boulay, and Matt Biggs worked on this schedule to increase the synchronous learning time. So this schedule would be in effect until March first, when they will then go to the hybrid model and will be required to meet the thirty-five-hour synchronous learning time requirement. But this will be the schedule moving forward for the high school until that change happens. And I think that is the end of my long-winded share out.
If I can just chime in, just a couple of quick comments, too. Normally, across the district, we try to keep as much consistency as we can in all of our schools, whether it's middle schools or all the elementaries. In this particular case, to add this type of time, we really left the autonomy in each community for them to take a look at their own schedules and see how they can basically come into the new compliance regulations within what they're doing within their buildings. Because each building is a little bit different, and so this is one of the rare times where we kind of stood back and said, this is not going to be a constant rate across grade grouping levels. We're leaving it up to the individual schools. And so I think that our principals can probably speak to that a little bit. So maybe Todd, if you want to share the screen, or stop sharing that and show the full screen again, so that some of the principals can speak in terms of, thank you, speak in terms of some of the things that they're seeing in their buildings. Just maybe a two-minute quick blurb from each of our principals and Martina.
If I could interject, please. I know that there were a number of questions raised in some of the emails that we received. Some were very specific to questions about time that individuals' children were receiving and some kind of a concern that about us offering the minimum and not going more. Are those questions going to be addressed during this presentation? Because I know we didn't hear from a lot of people, I think we got five or six emails, but I think some of those questions, you know, bear responding to. I'm thinking about just some of the things that if, that we submit something to the state, but the way that it gets implemented may be specific to a school. If parents have concerns about the time and how it's being allotted at their school, is their best course of action to connect with the child's teacher, the school? What, so I guess I'm looking for how that, the information that has been, the questions that have been sent to the school committee and to you are going to be addressed tonight.
I think that Todd actually has responded to a number of them just through the presentation and through his explanation. And I think if we hear from each of the principals just very quickly, and Martina, I think we should kind of hopefully kind of wrap up everything. If we've got things that are still out there, then we'll go back after them.
Okay, thank you.
If we could just hear from the principals quickly, actually, before we do that, though, might I add, though, Kathy, if people have concerns about their specific schools, they should be reaching out to their specific schools, to the principals. So I just want to put that out there. If we can do, I know on my screen, I'm looking at Laura Ross, Joel, Kyle, then Martina. Can we follow that, please? Laura, if you can start, just speak really, really briefly tonight about this, because I know it's almost nine o'clock.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding the middle-level opportunities that we've explored. Joel and Kyle and I have met frequently throughout the course of the summer and the fall to work to calibrate as we are able, but as you mentioned, each school and each schedule is somewhat different based on the dynamics of our school communities. And so we appreciate the latitude to take a look at our schedule with that lens. So while we're calibrated to a certain extent, we do differentiate based on our community needs and our different structures. So I can speak to Luther Burbank and what we're looking at in terms of maximizing synchronous opportunities for students during their remote days. And that is looking at that tutorial time, that remote synchronous tutorial time with their content teachers, specifically humanities and the STEM approach. And so we're looking at offering humanities tutorial, synchronous tutorial, and a STEM tutorial for students so that they have an opportunity on the remote days to have time with their ELA teacher and their math teacher for additional academic support and to check in with those teachers. The time is not optional, so that is different than office hours or optional synchronous check-ins. These are tutorials where their teachers are going to be available for them to help support them while they're at home and they are scheduled at this time for the end of the day. And this time would be in addition to the synchronous small group and synchronous check-ins that are already scheduled earlier in the day. And I'm grateful to our teachers for going back into the schedule with me and exploring those options who are excited about the rollout of that beginning next week.
Great, thanks, Laura Ross.
Reiterate sort of what Laura said about thanking the committee for, you know, the opportunity tonight. So as this developed and came out, we certainly started our wheels turning. And throughout this, elementary school principals have met, so Mr. Bates, Mr. O'Shea, myself, along with Dr. McGuire and Martina Kenyon. So where we left things at the beginning of this week is we had some lists of options to run through. And Todd took a look at those and, you know, gave us the okay to start moving forward with, you know, how we could consider these different options within our building. So yesterday after school, Ms. Neal and our assistant principal and I met with grade-level reps and sort of like a little bit of an ad hoc committee in our building to discuss, you know, present five different possible options that we had thought through what worked for our personnel availability, for our current schedule, and obviously up against what we're looking at. I think one thing of note that's important to consider is that if we're looking at sixty minutes a week to add into the schedule, we can't add sixty minutes on a Monday and Tuesday for a Cohort A kid because they're already in school. We've already captured that time on the survey that we sent to the state. So you really have to apply that sixty minutes across the other three days of that child's week. So in a discussion, we had a great discussion with our teams yesterday with our grade-level reps. They went and met with their teams today, and they're getting back to us within, you know, by the end of the morning tomorrow to let us know sort of what their preferences are and what their other questions or concerns may be. So one thing that I thought was interesting amongst our teams is we hear so much about how well the in-person learning is going, and they didn't want to let go of any time that they had with the kids that are already in the building on those days, which I hadn't really fully, I knew exactly what they were talking about, but they didn't want to start working with kids at home and give up the time that they already had with kids in the building, which I thought was an interesting perspective because they know how critical that time is when they do have those kids in building and didn't want to step away from them at all. So I think there's just, you know, it's something new, and hats off to our teachers. I heard no negativity. I heard no, you know, anything more than problem-solving and trying to move this forward and what works best for, you know, what we have for resources and schedules and certainly what works best for kids as well. So that's where we're at with center. And once those decisions are made, we'll share those out with our staff and our community.
Great, thanks, Ross. Joel, and actually I'll fit Steven before Kyle, so Joel.
Thank you. I guess I'd start by thanking the superintendent for the option for us to be as flexible as we need to be for our schools. But I think that the truth and the reality of the implementation of this is that we're far more similar than we are different. And so I think at Florence Sawyer School, as Mrs. Friend already detailed, the transition will be for our students, helping them to understand that the time is no longer optional, but mandatory and in capturing some of the times that's already there. In addition, as Principal Mulcarren spoke about, we have a number of options that we've looked at at the elementary level. And our teams will be coming together tomorrow morning. Prior to school, we have a scheduled middle-school meeting. And coincidentally, a K- to five meeting at the end of the day. And so in working in partnership with our association representatives, we will be sort of narrowing in on those options that are already on the table. And Principal Mulcarren described, you know, the morning meeting option for both cohorts to be set up to start your day at the elementary level with an understanding of what your synchronous work is expected to be, continuing with the check-in times that are already scheduled if there's a need during the day in sort of navigating that work. And then having that time at the end of the day to wrap up with the entire class and to set up the next day's work, whether you are in the, coming back to the hybrid or going into the remote at-home days. Additionally, you know, we have, we could expand the time in Wednesdays as well and may go in that direction. But we also want to be conscious of the, you know, one of the underlying principles in developing these schedules was being conscious of the amount of time we're asking students to be on-screen and, you know, trying to find that balance between structured learning time, but not necessarily in front of a screen time. So, you know, that might look like a block of time where you have a lesson with the teacher, the Google Meet stays open while the students are working independently or in a breakout room in groups, and then coming back together. You know, where there's both access to the teacher and that extended time. And I think, you know, that that's the model that we, that Dr. McGuire spoke about in terms of the Remote Learning Academy, and it looks like that will be successful. So there is still work to be done, without question. And we want to be able to both meet the requirements, but also stay true to the the plans that we developed with all of you this summer and in the best interest of all of our students.
Great, thanks, Joel. Steve, can you speak to the high school for a minute, please?
At the high school, we felt that we were within the forty hours, that's why we put it in the first place, based on our asynchronous time where our teachers are available for students' work at that point. Once we looked at the DESI guidelines and whatnot, we decided we wanted to tweak it to some extent where we brought, we added an additional synchronous day, synchronous class for every every day of the week, and we're going to add some actual, about ten minutes of time where the teachers will be meeting with students during the asynchronous time. Our task force was really clear on they were worried about the screen time as well. I have to agree with Joel, we were worried about having too much screen time. But we're still going to try to work through that, and, you know, it works out pretty well. I know I heard the, some of the comments in the beginning. I'll try to answer one of those questions for the high school anyway because we made this plan based on the whole school, and individual student schedules may be different in that regard. And that if a student isn't taking, isn't involved in PE right now, he may only have six classes, so his time would be a little bit different. We based our number of hours on an overall school basis, not on individual student basis. Though some students may have less than that, but ultimately, if they had a seven-period schedule, they would have those forty hours in that time frame. We're also working on a hybrid model that'll fit the thirty-five as well. And we're still in the draft phase of that, so it's all I have, you know how short-winded I am.
That's great, thanks, Steve. And Joan, just to put you on notice, I'm going to ask you to speak after Martina, please. So Kyle?
Thank you very much. Can everyone hear me okay? Thank you very much for allowing just a couple of minutes for you to speak. I would, I just first want to say that this is the first time that the changes to our class schedule has been made public or publicly released, that the staff and parents are going to know about it more officially tomorrow during a faculty meeting and in a memo that I'll send out. So I don't want to overstate too much of what is obvious, but, you know, I think none of the way that this has rolled out has been ideal. You know, we spent much of the summer and the fall planning our SLT based on what we thought were the most important things, and that's the health and safety of our students and staff. So, you know, it's unprecedented, I think, that we're, that we're, you know, here almost halfway through the school year. And, you know, we're looking at changing, doing pretty considerable changes to our schedule. You know, it will present some challenges for our staff. We've got some momentum going. But just like we've done in the past, our staff will make it work. I know they will. I've consulted directly with a lot of the lead teachers. And the way that we're going to end up making sure that we're meeting all these different components of SLT, the new, these new regulations, is by increasing our time on Wednesdays. We already have an extended homeroom time, so we're going to utilize that a little bit differently. And what I think you'll find out from that is that we're going to have over sixty additional minutes that we're going to have connected with students when they're not in the building and they're at home. I just want to give a plug for our staff. They have been unwavering in their flexibility with all of this. And I think that just speaks to the level of top-notch educators that we have at Hail. So I also think it's important for us to just keep all this in mind as we go into next year with the unknown for that. It's important to sort of, you know, have some forethought into how next year could be different. So, but again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and, you know, we'll get it done at Hail.
Thanks, Scott. Martina?
Thanks, Brooke. So I just want to take the opportunity to reiterate parts of the process. And I think Joel said it really nicely that we always see that our schools are more similar than they are different. And our approach to this process was kind of, well, basically the same as the approach we always take, which is that we come together as a leadership team to understand the guidance, once it's available from the DESE, come to consensus on our interpretation of the purpose and make sure that we have a clear idea of the priorities and what's most important. And then talk about what that means in terms of the best approach for our students at Neshoba. So while there is flexibility that you heard in how this is being implemented. As a team, we came to consensus in the types of activities that um would fit into our understanding of the priorities. Um, and then also um discussed so that teachers could be supported as effectively as possible, what that could look like. And that included also um. To the best that we could, because every district is in this position of trying to interpret this information very quickly, but. Um, learning from other districts on how they're thinking about this and what they're thinking it could look like for them to try to share as much as we can with our. With the staff in our district, so. I appreciate every opportunity for us to come together in this and um it's also great to see that each school is um. Taking our kind of overall um understanding and, and. Applying it in a way that makes sense for the students in that building. Thank you.
Great, Martina, thanks. Joan?
So, um, I guess in my realm, we are very fortunate because I have a group of administrators. That I worked with very closely all summer to go through every student's um special ed. IEP service delivery and we really made thoughtful recommendations about the students who needed to come in four days a week. In order to get their special ed services, so I can't thank them enough for partnering with me because we have more than six hundred students in the district and we had to go and have conversations about every single student. So it was no easy task. Our students who are in our district-based programs, we automatically said those are students that needed to come in four days a week, so in told. District-wide, we have about forty-eight percent of our kids um that are on IEPs that are coming in four days a week. Uh preschool, um, our three-day preschool altered that program, so that program um is coming in full-time because they were. A high-needs group for DESI. And then our five-day programs um have the remote day, but they are in Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday as well, so. The special ed staff have been absolutely remarkable district-wide. Because on top of the students that are coming in and trying to manage a classroom grade-level schedule and provide services to students. They also are servicing students that are in the Remote Learning Academy. K to eight, and there were about seventy special ed students that are in the Remote Learning Academy. So they are moving quickly between seeing students in person. They then have virtual lessons for kids that have come home because, uh, that are at home. And, and those schedules are reflected of not interrupting the academic instruction that's going on in inclusion. So it has taken a valiant effort. To make sure all those things are happening and you know, we've hit some squeaky wheels and some bumps. Along the way, but I, I can't tell you that this team has worked tremendously well together as a team and I couldn't be prouder to be um leading this team.
Thanks Joan. So I, I think um I, I'll turn it back to Dr. McGuire for any last-minute reflections here before we open it up. It has been a challenge, it has been a short period for turnaround. I would say that we reached out to DESI. Countless times to make sure that what we were doing was right or that we were on the right pathway. Um, I do agree with Martina, Martina, you just did a beautiful job tonight of articulating how our team works. We always come together, we always make sure that we have through consensus, understanding of what the work that's ahead of us. But then we always have autonomy within our communities to do what's right for our, our particular communities and that's where we've landed. So, uh, Dr. McGuire, any last wrap-up comments from you?
No, just, I, I mean, I appreciate everyone coming on to speak specifically to the work that they're doing at their grade level. You know, the level of specificity and, you know, the identity that each of their schools and their building takes on. Um, and we've certainly wanted to be um flexible to those kinds of things that we know happen in communities just naturally. You know, the work that Martina does and leading the teaching and learning team with me is so important and clearly the work that. Joan is doing with special education, um, you know, we're constantly meeting with other districts, I mean, I meet with the group once a week, Brooke meets with her superintendent's group. To just, you know, ask for ideas, what are you doing, how are you doing this here? The number of times I've been in con- my contact at DESI and the number of iterations of this data, quite honestly. And I've said, nope, we gotta pull it back, we need to make a change or we need to do this because one of our principals or one of our buildings or they said no. So it's been, you know, and, and we continue to, continue to look at it. But I think we, we feel really good about moving forward and what the opportunities that we can provide moving forward, um, beginning next week, so.
So with that, we'll open up to any other questions.
So what I'd like to do is see who has questions and then. I'll keep a list and then I'll go through the list of who has questions, so questions. So I have Amy, who else? Leah? Okay, um, Mike? Alright, so Amy. Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank all of the principals, the administrators, everybody who worked on the presentation and. Sat through three hours of this meeting in order to talk for two minutes and enlighten us on the plans that are gonna go into effect next week. I, I have a bunch of questions, um, but I'd like to start with one for Mr. Bates. About the changes for grades K through five and then also I have a question about the middle school. So the simultaneous morning meetings, is that something? I guess I'm wondering whether the changes that have been, that are required to be enacted are gonna be happening at each grade level across K through five? And, and, yeah, go ahead.
Finish your question, that's fine.
And I heard, I think I heard one of the principals say that it was gonna be happening on Wednesdays, if, if that was the plan at Florence Sawyer as well.
So I, I think what all of the principals have detailed is that, uh, although Principal Mulcaren had the meeting already with his staff. We have work that needs to continue to be done that, so there are a menu of options that the three elementary principals, for example. Met virtually and created a Google Doc with um a, a number of possibilities, but. To Superintendent Clenchey's point, we want to make sure that uh it fits for our, uh, our grade levels and our schools and so. What the morning to the specific answer to your question. The morning meeting would be uh an option where the classes would have the grade level, the, both cohorts in each of the. I'm sorry, both cohorts together where you have the students in front of you, you have the students uh online. And you're able to. You know, sort of set up the day, first of all, take stock of the, you know, the social emotional aspects that they, that they do in a morning meeting. And check in with everyone, how are we doing today, what's our focus for the day? And, and be able to provide the students that are in the at-home, uh, on the at-home days. Uh, an understanding of, of what uh in particular the day would look like, so for example, if you're in, uh, you know. You know, an upper elementary class where you're, you're, the students in class are working on something. In, in literacy and they're, you know, they're writing a story, you, you would be doing that, but have the availability of someone. At the start of the day, your teacher, to explain what that's going to look like. And then wrapping that up at the end of the day. I, I think several of us brought up the Wednesday schedule and, and expanding that to a degree where we can as well. You asked about would that look the same at each grade level theoretically? But I, there's still work to be done on that. Uh, the other point that I would emphasize is that. A lot of our um check-in times, we made the conscious decision to, a- at the middle level, for example. To have that time available for a student. With, because they have four teachers or five teachers at the eighth-grade level. To be able to say, I want to spend my forty-five minutes on that day with my English Language Arts teacher because I have specific questions there. W- what that does then is, is make it more of an optional time for check-ins and. A- and so the transition for our students at the middle level will be that, you know, you need to be there and that, that, that time. You know, can be uh review time and clarification time, it can also be wrap-up time. A- at the elementary level, you'd be, you're able to, to bring them back together and. You know, eh, answer questions about how things went, it's, it would look, again, to the social emotional point, uh, a time for sharing and. You know, those, those activities that elementary teachers are just brilliant at, at, you know, bringing together the, the whole class and, and building that classroom community.
Amy, did you have another question?
Yeah, about the middle school, because Florence Sawyer is a K through eight school, the middle school tends to follow the elementary school schedule. Um, I wondered how that, um. Well, on the at-home independent learning days, it tends to follow the. Elementary school schedule, um, so I was wondering how that. Worked when the elementary school was found to need additional. SLT time, but the middle school wasn't, that, that was a question that.
Well, so I, I think that, you know, the, the. I think the superintendent made this point that, or, or Dr. McGuire made this point that, you know, there's, there's sort of. Meeting the number and then there's what we want for all of our students and so. You know, our middle school teachers ha- have, you know, are, are open to and welcoming the opportunity to have more time. I will tell you that I, I have uh an eighth-grade advisory, um, and we met this morning and, and they. They were excited about the idea of having this uh identified time. More so at the end of the day than at the beginning of the day, uh, from a student perspective, because they've already started their work. And, um, you know, and, and by two o'clock, two-thirty, it's a chance to check in with teachers and. And validate the work that they've done, to get clarification, to, um, you know, to share with their peers.
Thank you. Um, Leah?
Hi guys, okay, so, um, I have a couple of clarifying questions, but then, um, a real question. So the first question I have is, it sounds like the tutorials at the middle level. Is looking like teachers are going to be running their classroom and the kids at home for longer periods of time? And maybe that's for Kyle. Or any middle school teacher.
We're not, we're not certain right now that we are gonna do that with um our middle school students, I think we're gonna utilize what we already have as an, a- as an elongated homeroom where students are already checking in. With their homeroom teacher, whether they're at home and they're in person. And we're gonna, we've got staff that is in the room with the students and we have staff that's there for the students who are at home. So, um, our plan is to utilize that right now. There's gonna be some discussion about this with our, with our staff tomorrow at a faculty meeting so that they can weigh in on, 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 um, the approach. Right now, I think when you look at the numbers, we're, we're pretty solid in eighth grade because we have that fifth section of Spanish. That's not quite the case in the sixth and seventh grade, but, um. The tutorial right now is, is an option, I think we're probably gonna lean more towards using that homeroom block because. You know, students are already required to sign in and check in with their teachers during that time.
The homework, homeroom block is a period at which the teacher is working with the kids in the classroom and the kids at home and they like look at each other, right? And they like talk a little bit to each other?
That's the idea, the idea is to preview, uh, kind of set the stage for what's gonna happen during, during the rest of the school day. Some students get specific messages, they often hear the announcements that are being made in the morning over the loud, over loudspeaker. There's some tech things that we need to work through, but that's our goal is to, is to utilize that time, it's a period right now, it's about twenty-four minutes. Over the course of each day, so in the, in the course of a week, you're looking at over an hour.
Great. Um, I want to move over to the high school really quickly and just ask a clarifying question. And maybe this is for Brooke, I'm not sure who can answer it, but the asynchronous time, so I'm looking at the high school schedule with the added block that the kids will have synchronous each day and so it seems to me that, um. They're gonna have five, at most five synchronous blocks each day. And I'm wondering if the other two blocks which remain asynchronous or perhaps a study hall. If they're asynchronous and the teacher is staying on the Google Meet, but the students leave and they go do asynchronous work, is that being counted tor- as. Student learning time?
Yeah, the first ten minutes are because the teacher's gonna be teacher-directed.
So just the first ten minutes are?
Correct.
Okay.
And then, then the teacher's available for the rest of the period. Um, if students have, they, they're really using that, the asynchronous time is, is a extra help kind of thing, they're giving asynchronous work, but they're gonna help them work through it.
Okay, so DESI would only let you count the first ten minutes of that where there's this check-in and it's, and it's very direct?
Yeah, it, it, we didn't really talk to DESI about the first ten minutes, we, when we, when we first looked at it, we considered that asynchronous time. As more of a synchronous time, we were just calling it something different. Um, because the teachers are, the teachers are in that class, they're, they're available for that class the whole period. Um, but the students are doing some asynchronous stuff so that they can get off of the, off of the, um, screen for a little while.
So are you saying, Steve, that, um, all seven blocks are being counted as synchronous SLT?
N- n- no, we're just counting the five, the five where the teachers are actually teaching those five periods and then the, the two will be asynchronous, but the teacher's available. To, to, to work with the students they need to be, they are now. And they are with the, with the three blocks during the day, but we, we just switched it around a little bit to, to meet the SEI requirement.
Got it. And so I guess this goes to my probing question, if you guys don't mind, so I know that there was a lot of confusion. In the citizens' comments tonight about potentially over-reporting uh our numbers and so I think that. Many people are relying upon DESI's tableau calculations, are you guys familiar with this database? Is that what we should be relying on for what Nishoba has reported as SLT? Yes. So, um, just one example, I'm looking at the high school tenth-grade report and it shows that there are on Wednesdays. Four hours of synchronous time and two hours of asynchronous time, but isn't the Wednesday only a three-hour day?
It's, it's.
Good, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, well, we, we have, the, the whole morning is, is, is synchronous time and the afternoon is asynchronous time.
Right, so but like.
They see, they see every, they see every teacher, every class for a short, for a short amount of time until, until noon time. And then, and then after lunch, they've got asynchronous time at that point.
But isn't it, um, isn't it just a three-hour day, Wednesdays, because you guys start at, uh, eight-thirty? And you're done at eleven-forty-three?
Yes.
So why report four hours to DESI, but there's only three hours of the school day?
I'd, I'd have to look at the numbers in front of me, I don't, I don't have those numbers directly in front of me, so I'm not sure what that's about. Um, I know that we have, we have, the, the teachers, all fi- all seven of the periods that day are, are synchronous periods and the teachers are all teaching. So, so.
So I think.
I don't know, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but.
I don't know if any parents are scouring that tableau, but, um. I think that that's one thing that just jumped out at me that did look like over-reporting to get to that, that's very like. Clear forty-hour report number. But I don't think that the high school synchronous time is forty hours, even in the full remote model. And I think that that's kind of some of the questions that parent, that parents are pulling up or were questioning.
That's where there was gray area, which we went back to DESI to say. Our teacher originally, you know, before we got the guidance that office hours don't necessarily count. Our teachers, you know, those days are available all day to be with kids one-on-one. Um, as well as a lot of those teachers are meeting with small groups of kids sometimes and that's time that does count. So we asked the question, well, how do we, how do we get to that number? And it's still very, very gray because we know that our teachers, particularly at the high school, are available all day long. For teachers, for students to access them and so therein lies that gray area in which we, in which, when we got the feedback, this, which is why we've now added an hour. To each of those days to make sure that we feel fully in compliance with that, so. It's not a matter of over-reporting, it's taking a look at all of the groups all of the time, like you hear Joan report out that all of our special education kids are coming in. Every day and that has to be part of the equation as well, so. There was a lot of gray areas where we said, well, how do we count this? And I was just in a webinar, you know, this past week where a lot of those questions are still coming up because we want to make sure that. You know, this really counts and so if you're doing office hours with. Cause we wanna make sure that, you know, this really counts. And so if you're doing office hours with a group of ten kids from a class. And it's a group instruction, that actually should count if you're offering that, but it's still that, just that gray area. So. We saw it as, let's add an additional hour per day, so we know that we're meeting that benchmark, no questions asked.
So I would just say that even with the five blocks of synchronous time each day, you're at three hour, three point eight hours. But we're reporting four hour. So I just think that there's like a tiny bit of discrepancy between. The lived synchronous time and and frankly, I think that this is all baloney, by the way. Um, the goalpost is constantly moving on you guys and it's ridiculous.
They do, they also require us to report out to the closest half hour. So it's not like minute either. So we're required to round to the closest half hour and you'll, you would notice that in the report out. It's always point five or point zero. Um, and you know, we're not, we don't, we don't report minutes. We report, we report to the closest point five hour.
Well, I was home for the first time ever today, um and I listened to all of my kids in their rooms and the uh level of activity that was happening in my house today. Was just absolutely inspiring. So, you know, despite all of the craziness of all of this, I.
Right about the goalposts.
So, thanks.
And and Brooke knows how much sleep we probably, we've all lost over this for sure. So, and as a parent, I can say the same thing, cause I've got a ninth grader who's still hybrid and remote and a fifth grader, one who entered. Just entered middle school, one who just entered high school and same thing. So I totally um empathize with every parent out there.
And Leah, I wanna thank you for bringing that up because the movement, a- and actually, Rechechel had said the same thing to me earlier today, the notion of moving that. That goalpost has been so incredibly frustrating and for us to get information given to us between Christmas and New Years. That's when we got our information and then to try to turn this around by January nineteenth. It's a lot to ask the school district, like frankly, but I I think that we've done an amazing job. I think I do.
We continue to ask questions. Anytime we have a question, I I ma- immediately make a call. I've got a contact over there and they're, they've been wonderful about getting back to us and. And all of that, but we continue to just ask the question, are we doing this right? What more? So. Um, and Desi has been helpful that way, but it is a short turnaround. So um.
I think the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, uh, the special ed students are exceed that forty hours, cause if they're coming in four days a week. Over a course of two weeks, you're at forty-eight hours and that doesn't even include the synchronous time we do with them. And that gets averaged into the high school as well. So, you know, there's a population of kids that are coming in um quite frequently and that averages in.
Thank you. Um, Mike, you have a question?
Yeah, um. Eh, it's, it's important to acknowledge, um, you know, especially after hearing the the presentation, how difficult the task this is and. You know, after hearing from all the principals, it's, it's clear that this is still a work in progress and it's frankly completely understandable that that it's still a work in progress. Um, and also that. There are limitations, given the model that we've implemented, you know, school, for instance, still has to start at eight thirty. And it still has to end at two thirty. We can't just tack on an hour before or after. And so we have to really be creative, which means that there are limits, right? I mean, we can only, we can only do so much and I and I and I fully get that and I fully appreciate it. Um, in the beginning of the presentation, I noticed that there wasn't any mention of the. Um, the hybrid model at the high school that's going to be implemented. Um, because for my calculations, there was a shortfall, but then I heard Steve mention that there was going to be a revisitation of that model to. Um, to bridge that shortfall. Um, so I guess my overall question is, once we land. On whatever models or whatever sort of resuscitated models on January nineteenth, where can residents find the hours that are being reported? Short of having to go on to the Desi website. Will that be something that's gonna be shared on our website?
Yes, so we um, so once we, once we do that, you know, cause each building might have it its own little flavor and eh in some. Some differences, you know, principals and buildings will be sharing out the schedules, just like uh Raina Rego did with the Remote Learning Academy yesterday. Um, so we have those and I I didn't share them tonight. I just kind of reviewed them, cause they were, they were three separate grade levels and they were pretty cumbersome and pretty specific. But we certainly can share those, put those on the webpage. And Desi will also require us after the nineteenth to once again report. You know, these schedules out again and they they will become public again, but we can certainly share that information on the webpage, but. They will require us to do another inventory of data and another iteration of the synchronous learning time hours as well across all of those subgroups. And all of those models. So, um, but those individual schedules will come out once they're done. Um, we met with the high school team yesterday and um we're putting out in a a survey to the high school families. By week's end to get that same sense of, okay, who's planning on coming back hybrid, just like we did with our uh K through eights. Over the summer so that we have that number, working number, so that Steve and his team can then really tie up the specificity of the schedule.
Yeah. Well, again, eh eh again, I'm I'm done, but thank you again to our uh building administrators and uh for the teachers for. Undertaking yet another colossal effort. So thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I see Amy's hand up, but I wanna check to see if anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to ask a question yet, has a question. Okay, Amy.
Thank you for recognizing me again. I know it's getting late, but I wanted to ask. I kinda wanted to follow up on what Leah was asking about the high school and and um. Look at the hours that have been reported on that tableau for elementary school students. Um, because we're proposing to add in to a hundred and twenty minutes of learning time to reach. The thirty-five hours per week minimum um S L T time. I think. A lot of the emails we saw today and the lived experience of many students is that the learning time. Is actually less than thirty-three hours per week.
Oh, Amy, it is, because remember they took the average one through eight. So, so we reported out that it is less than thirty-three because they took the average of our one through eights. That that's where the thirty-three. So our upper grade middle school were at thirty-six because they've got related arts courses as well as band, et cetera. So they take the average and that's where they report out what you need to do in terms of making up the time.
Um, you know, when I look at the daily schedule that Nishoba submitted on that tableau for grades. Um, one and four, it's showing one hour of synchronous learning time on Thursdays and Fridays or. Yeah, at home, that I said Thursdays and Fridays, cause we're cohort A, but the at-home learning days, which are currently just a, an attendance check-in. So I think many parents are feeling like those um. You know, adding two hours to the schedule is is not enough to bring it up to the minimum required by Desi. To get to thirty-five hours per week. Um, if we're already counting in an hour of learning time on those at-home days. Um, that when you read the guidance, um, which I realized came out. After this data was submitted, so it may have been a gray area. Eh, you know, like Leah said, I'm I'm not sure that one hour. Um, of a, it should be counted if it's just an attendance check-in. So I think that the larger point I'm trying to make is that the. The data doesn't necessarily represent the lived experience of many of the students. And so if we're talking about making changes to meet the minimum requirement. It's not feeling like enough. For some of the families.
Amy, I'm gonna speak to that. I I appreciate your perspective um a- and and value and respect your opinion.
Thank you.
But I do also wanna put forward that we have attended multiple webinars on this. We've, we've ha- we've had constant communication with D E S E. Um, we've met with our Java-like groups. I think we're doing the very best that we can do right now. I hear what you're saying and and certainly we'll take that under, under advisement, but. I would want you to know how hard this team has worked inclusively with Desi. To to look at our numbers and look at where we need to go, but I I certainly hear what you're saying.
Yeah, I know.
Person's lived experience, we can understand to be a little bit different, but keep in mind that they're also counting our subgroups as Jones spoke. Spoke to with special education in like, what may be going on in one building might be slightly different in another. Like I know that in Stowe. You know, uh those, those check-ins are thirty minutes times two, which is sixty minutes per day. So. And they're act, they're asking us to report out on di- district wide. And so when we report out on this data, like we, we compile it all. And we also, and then they they do an averaging as well. So I, you know, there, there's some subjectivity there and, but we have to also include that they're including all the, the other components that we put in there. Including some of our subgroups, our special education pop- population we have to report out on as well. Um, as well as our remote learners and our remote learning academy.
What proportion of our students um. Are remote learning academy and.
I think they're not, they're not our dominant model, so they're not required in the da- to meet the, to meet the data, but we are, we are making sure that we are gonna get them up there. But I don't have that exact percentage at each grade level right, handy right here.
Okay. My my comments aren't taking away from any of the hard work that has been done. Believe me, I I know this has been. Um, an incredible task for everybody involved. I'm just trying to share the perspective of a parent living this. And when I compare my own kids' schedules to what's reported, they they don't necessarily add up. And so, um, you know, I felt I would be remiss. Um, if I didn't bring that up.
But but you understand that there's an averaging that's at play here and that's why.
I do. I appreciate that. I I'm, you know, I understand how averages work, but the majority of our students are in a hybrid model. So, um.
Right.
You would think that the hybrid student's schedule would be driving those averages.
So if I understand, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Amy, I didn't mean to interrupt you. Are you finished, Amy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, am I to understand that this, we have to either, we have to implement. What we have put into place beginning January nineteenth, is that correct? And so as we move from January nineteenth forward, um. What's the process for assessing the the accuracy of the time that we have then proposed? And um revisiting our plan, evaluating our plan? Is that. Uh, eh, do you wanna pick that up? Do you want me to respond to that? Well, I'm just wondering if there's a next.
I think I just answered that when I addressed, you know, eh addressed Mike in terms of what the next steps will be in terms of. Our, what, we will have to report these new schedules out um to Desi and do another, you know, do another submission, very, I'm sure it'll be a very similar submission. Um, that we will, that we will submit, that will then be again, once again, made public. Um, and our building principals will be sending out what those, any new schedules look like to students, families. Um, as this week, they've been working, you know, tremendously hard with faculty to catch the faculty up to speed on, on all of this.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, um, thank you, everyone. Again, I know everybody has said it and unless you've lived, um. I had a hard enough time putting a middle and high school schedule together in normal times. I just can't even imagine the amount of work, but I know that. You, you've got the infrastructure, the teamwork, the talent, the leadership. Um, and everyone is just working as hard as they can. Um, and yeah, the goalposts keep moving and um, I don't know, we have no control over that, but thank you for all your hard work. Um, and your diligence on this and I'm sure we'll hear more about it, but I think Brooke mentioned it earlier. Parents who have concerns about the, what their children are receiving or if they feel there's a disparity. Um, uh, or anything, questions and concerns are best addressed. Through the building, through the child's teacher or the the building principal, who can uh really provide um specifics. And solutions. So um, I would encourage folks to uh start with teachers and and with the building principal. If they have questions or concerns. Okay, if there are no objections, I will move to the next item, which are. Uh, protocols for implementation of policy, B E D H, which is the citizens' comments policy. Leah, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, you go.
Uh, so guys, there, there have been, uh, so we submitted to you a draft. Of what we think a protocol could look like. Uh, we had our policy subcommittee meeting before this meeting. And we did tweak it a little bit. And so Kathy, would it be wise for perhaps Amy, if you're, if you're able, Amy. To share with the committee new version? They really are just tweaks, but like maybe one of them substantive.
So do you want to to screen share or send it to Alita so she can screen share? Um, how do you wanna uh do that?
I just shared it with Alita, but I'm happy to share on my my screen, whatever you prefer.
I don't know if you can shoot, screen share, if you can, what, Lita, what can we do?
Here we go. I'm doing it.
He's doing it.
Can you see it?
Nice job. Yes.
I'm gonna move everybody. Hang on, hang on.
Can you blow it up a little bit, Amy?
Sure, theoretically.
I can't, everybody's in the way. I gotta move you guys.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Wanna walk us through it?
Actually, I would love to turn this over to Amy completely. Go for it, Amy.
Okay.
Okay, so this was the protocol for how a, an individual wishing to ex. To speak during the public comment portion of our school committee meeting. Um, would do it. This is what was requested from the committee at the last school committee meeting. Um, the policy subcommittee met directly before this meeting, so we've been on Zoom since five fifteen. And we reviewed the protocol and like Leah said, made some tweaks. So. If it's okay with all of you, shall I just read what we have?
I'm cool with that.
Okay. Um, individuals wishing to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority during the public comment portion. Of a school committee meeting held over Zoom shall sign up to speak by emailing N R S C at N R S D dot net. At least one hour before the meeting with a subject line, quote, public comment for the date of the meeting, quote. Unquote, I mean, the chairperson will respond to the participant with the Zoom link prior to the start of the meeting and copy the Zoom host. Via email. The Zoom host will then allow the individual to join the meeting during the public comment segment of the meeting, which is usually the first fifteen minutes. The individual shall display their full name and town of residence on screen when they join the Zoom meeting. Individuals will be called upon to speak in the order in which their requests were received. Each individual's comment shall be in accordance with policy B E D H, which is the policy that governs public comment. That Nishoba is voted to adopt at the last meeting. After the comment is read, the individual will be asked to leave the Zoom meeting. If the individual does not leave, the Zoom host will remove the participant. Um, that's the protocol we're putting forward to the committee tonight. And I forgot to mention that um. We received several questions from Kathy on the previous version of this, and I think we incorporated most of the feedback Kathy provided. Or the comments that she had. So, are there any questions or comments?
Um, Joseph.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. Uh, first of all, I wanna compliment uh Ms. Cohen on the revisions she made to the. Suggested policy, because when I looked at it first, I noticed a couple of things that they replaced interested citizens with individuals. And I think they struck the language that required the uh participant to submit in writing their comments. Prior to their uh presentation before the uh committee. So I wanna thank her for that, cause she stole all my thunder in regards to uh the, my, my comments. The only thing I was gonna. Uh, suggest maybe is moving off of the the interested citizens to the any, it said individuals. You have it, interested citizens wishing to express an opinion, and I'm just wondering if perhaps any individual interested in speaking on issues. Might be more encompassing.
Okay, we did change, so it no longer says interested citizen, but so you're talking about changing express an opinion to, what were your words?
Uh, eh, you're, you're saying, eh, I I looked at, I looked at this very literally when I, when I read it and it said, you know, first of all, it had to be a citizen. And they, they had to wish to express an opinion. And I'm thinking, well, I don't think we wanna limit it to just citizens. I think we just wanna. And I'm thinking, well, I don't think we want to limit it to just citizens. I think we just want to say any individual, which you've done. And says expressed an opinion. I said, well, I don't know if I'm actually expressing an opinion. I may just want to speak on matters of particular fact, so um, I know it's just probably just a tomato, tomato, but I was just thinking that any individual interested in speaking on issues within the school committee's authority might be a little bit less restrictive and a little more encompassing of, of, you know, what people want to say.
So Lainey, you want to respond to Joseph?
Amy, maybe you can, yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Was that directed at me, Kathy or Eileen? I couldn't tell.
I don't know. Who, Joseph, to whom were you directing your comment?
No, it's, you know, I, I don't really, i- if the committee doesn't feel very strongly about this, I don't want to make a motion and take up time with this. It's just it's individuals wishing to speak on issues, and, and kind of going back to my colleague, Mr. Eccles from uh, earlier this evening, you know, when you can say it in two words instead of four, probably it's better to say it in two. You've got wishing to speak on issues, and I'm thinking just say any individual interested in speaking on issues within the school committee's authority. So it has to be, you don't have to wish, you don't have to speak, you don't have to espouse an opinion, you can just come and make your comment, be it opinion, fact, or otherwise.
Okay, I'm getting tired, so I've already forgotten what you've said.
Say it again, I was trying to write it down. I kept writing the wrong words. I think I.
Instead of individuals interested in, okay, so just with any individual interested in speaking, those would be the words.
Wait a second, interested in, all right, I got it.
All right, I'm doing it.
There you go.
And that's all you want?
That's it. I just, I, I, I'm looking at this very literally, and I, and I know I'm probably taking up time unnecessarily because it is late, but I think back to the Spalding case, you know, and the Spalding case sent, you know, repercussions throughout the entire Commonwealth. Uh, this just to me is, is, it's, it's all encompassing. It doesn't limit an individual to espouse an opinion. They don't have to be a citizen. It's just, they don't have to wish anything. Just come, speak, say your piece, move along. Thank you very much.
Okay, I need that changed.
Okay, um, Mary?
So I'm wondering where the three minute um, uh, time limit went. Because I foresee that what we want to do is to give, you know, let's say up to five people um, for the fifteen minutes, and I can anticipate that we could have someone who would just go on and on and on. A- anyway, it was in the first, and I don't, I don't see it in the second. I think, I think, I think it's important.
I'm happy to add it back in, but I, I'm have, let me just explain where it went. We talked about adding this statement that says each individual's comment shall be in accordance with policy B E D H. And in the policy, the three limit, three minute time limit is explicitly stated, and we wanted to avoid a situation where we had potential inconsistencies in this protocol versus the policy, so we thought this statement would capture that, but you know, I don't think it's a big deal to add it back in if that's what people prefer.
Um, Steve? And then Leah?
Yeah, okay, um, if the three minutes is in B E D H is also the fact that A, only if, if comments are the same thing between speaker number one and speaker number four, only one person speaks per topic. Number one, I believe that's the way we used to work it, and number two, I had to be on our agenda. Is that also in B E D H?
Um, if I could.
If those, if those things.
Yeah, just a point of clarification.
That's why, that's why, that's why you're not really speaking on any issue. You're speaking on what's on the, an item that's on the agenda. One person can say it if you, if you're number four and you're gonna say it on the same thing. No, that's the answer. Are those, are those conditions in B E D H? I don't have a copy of B E D H in front of me, so I don't know.
Steve, a point of clarification referencing the Spalding v, uh, Natick School Committee. What was found is that people can um, speak to something that is on the agenda or anything that is within the purview of the school committee. So even if it is not on the agenda, it can be related to budget policy or the superintendent. Uh, that being said, and what you're saying, and I think this came up with our legal, it was either Mike or um, Glenn Kuchar, where in order to determine the appropriateness of what someone is saying, you have to actually let them say it. So the toothpaste may be out of the tube, and this is what happened in Natick, that people were, they knew what the people were gonna talk about because they were doing it ad nauseam at other meetings. They prohibited them from speaking. So I think that, and I, and I saw it somewhere within the D qualifiers protocol. And that, I think, is in our, um, in the, the, um, I'm sorry, in the, in the policy, that, that statement, so, um, I think that if somebody, if, if this is happening by email, it's very easy to send somebody in response when you acknowledge receipt of their request um, to send them the policy with the protocol and the other stuff, so. Um, uh, Leah?
So the other point that Steve made was about repetitiveness.
Yeah.
And so um, we didn't put that in here, and I don't believe it's actually in B E D H, and that's largely because we couldn't actually prevent people from repeating. This would more be to the chair's discretion, I think, for her to say, okay, guys, this is, you know, we've already, we've already heard four comments on this, let's pro, you know, like you can't actually write that into a policy because that might get into areas of violation, I think.
Right, but it's within the chair's purview, and there were a couple of meetings where I said this, this, these two emails or statements represent um, several others that we received, but they all basically say the same thing. And I usually let the, whoever sent them know that that's what I'm going to do, um, so. Um, any, any other questions or comments? Um, Sharon? And then Rich?
Is there a provision anywhere that, um, I, I'm just, I'm thinking about how sometimes we have tens or what feels like hundreds of emails. Um, is there any provision that allows for a, a limit on how many citizens' comments can happen in a meeting? I, I could, I.
If there were.
Is that allowed to be a provision? I could just perceive that we could have a situation where we had fifteen or twenty people wanting to speak, and if each of those people speaks for three minutes, that's a an hour of meeting time. Maybe my math isn't quite right there. I'm tired too, but it's a lot of meeting time.
Yeah, um, open meeting law and the provision in it, if I'm not mistaken, says that school committees can have up to fifteen minutes. A lot of school committees just don't have any limit at all, but fifteen minutes have worked for us. Three minutes per person, and there are, there have been a couple of occasions where we extended it, but that is certainly within our purview to set the limit. And, and the policy does speak to that, so it's consistent with open meeting law.
Okay. Thank you.
And technically, open meeting law does not require public comment. This is just, this is just a courtesy.
Yes.
Uh, so to be able to set a time limit is, is within the chair's discretion.
Yes. Yes. Other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, just, just one quick question, uh, perhaps Leah or, or Amy, you guys could expand on that, perhaps even Kathy, since she spent a lot of time. I mean, does this seem like what a lot of other committees are doing? Like having all of their comment at the beginning of a period? I mean, that's a little rhetorical question, but I would like someone to answer that. But more to the point, I think part of the confusion here, and I'm sort of saying this so other people can hear it. My experience in town government, which I think a lot of people is, they go to their select board meeting, and the select board typically, they bring up an issue, there's like a presentation, the selectmen comment on it, you know, they go around it just like we do, and then afterwards, they invite the public to weigh in on it. Issue by issue or, or item by item. Steve, you're shaking your no, you're not, but I've been to, um, many select board members.
That, that's wonderful.
Every.
That's wonderful.
Okay, wait, please wait till you're, wait till you're recognized. Uh, it happens in almost every select board meeting, so the point is, that's the way people are conditioned, right? That's why they think they can come to our meeting and they can talk on, on almost every issue, right? And the reality is, those meetings are not like this meeting, which was what I was trying to get to. Uh, you know, this is a business meeting. We're here to transact. Um, there's other opportunities to connect with the school committee members. Um, and I think the school committee's done a better job of uh, communicating, like we've had these listening sessions, for example. But I, I don't think the expectation should ever be that we're gonna, it's gonna be run like any of these select board meetings, and I think that, to me, has been the perception that I think is missing in all of this, so forgive me if I'm seeing the obvious to other school committee members, but I'm sitting it for the public. Uh, this, you know, we're trying to make things more accessible. I think this is a great model. Um, and so I guess I'll go back to my question. Is this pretty much the norm around other school committees?
I think Amy has done some research on this, if I'm not mistaken.
I did. I mean, I think it's up to, what I've learned is that there are some school committees who are, um, doing more. There's some scho- school committees that are doing less, and it basically comes down to the, how the chairperson of the committee and the school committee decided to run their meetings when everything went remote in March, and um, and it's, some of them have um, opened up Zoom meetings, the, the entire Zoom meeting to the public. Some have gone the other direction and, and some are in the middle. Um, I think this is a good starting point. And if it works well, maybe we can progress beyond that, especially if our remote meetings are gonna be something that continues into the future.
Steve, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I'm recognizing you.
Okay. Um, I can, I can live with, live with this, but Rich's suggestion or what Rich has stated leads to an interchange between the select board and the um, the citizen at the meeting, and that's not what we want to get anywhere near.
Yeah.
We have all, we have always comments by the, by the um, citizens is, is fine. Anyone who wants to say anything is fine. Three minutes, a total of fifteen minutes with the pre-notification to the chair, uh, I think is, is, is okay, is acceptable. But what we don't want, and uh, I don't, I don't think even a, a select board would want it, is for, if you had comments later on in the meeting, that might lead to back and forth discussion, and this is a business meeting, and they can watch it, and they can listen to it, and they can talk to it, and they can send us emails afterwards, which most, which many of them do. But this is a business meeting. We have business to accomplish. It's not a forum where, where, where we're gonna get into a cross discussion with, with anybody who's not on the committee.
And I don't.
So that's, I don't think this leads to that, and I, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying this is fine. The other, the other comment, uh, that's fine for select boards, but this is a business meeting. Thank you.
I don't think Rich was advocating for that. He was explaining that that's what they do, and I have to chuckle because just with the eleven of us, look how long we meet. Can you imagine inviting public comment out of, after everything? Um, everybody would have to quit their jobs, I think. So, we'll try this. I think it's a good step forward. I think that um, if the committee is amenable to, to, I was just gonna call you George Joe. That's how tired I am. Um, um, yeah, so if you're amenable to um, Joseph's suggestion about um, individuals interested in speaking, that's the only change that I heard. Um, and then the other things are processed when somebody, um, doesn't have to be stated, but anything that comes to me with the request um, will be acknowledged and they'll be sent a copy of the policy with our, our ground rules, essentially. Any other comments or questions for the policy committee? Steve, is that your hand up?
Yes, it is. I'm sorry. I would, I would, I'm, I'm looking at that first line, any individual interested in speaking on issues within the school committee's authority. I would, I would like to see the word on changed to, in speaking to an issue.
Right, so Joseph said individuals interested in speaking. You want to add?
No, I just, I, whoever, Amy, I guess that's you, right? You're changing it or, yeah. I, to read now, in speaking to an issue within the school committee's authority.
Interested in speaking to.
To an issue.
Issue.
Yeah, Amy, Amy, Amy fixed it, or at least that's my thought, so she, she put it in there. I, I don't know if anyone else. Whatever.
So what does it say now?
And any individual interested in speaking to an issue within the school committee's authority.
Okay. What do you think, Amy?
I mean, fine, I'd, I'd actually prefer it to say about, but I really don't feel strongly, so.
Does anyone feel strongly? Because we're changing it to say individuals interested in speaking to an issue within the school committee's authority. Rich?
I, I guess I just don't understand why we'd limit to an issue. Somebody could say, I disagree with that, I like that.
But B E.
The issue.
Well, that, that, if we just say, the, 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 the policy itself outlines the fact that public participation, citizens' comments, whatever, has to be within the, 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 the purview of the school committee. So for, this is a procedural thing, not policy, so I think it would be captured with, this is my opinion, individuals interested in speaking, et cetera, and then they have the policy with the, the more specificity with regard to what is allowable as a citizen's comment. That's, that's how I would cover it. And again, this is protocol, not policy. We have the policy. This is a protocol, how we're going to enact the policy. Steve?
Yeah, the only point I would make is that speaking to the school, speaking to an issue within the school committee's authority, for example, we don't want someone to, 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 to make a, a citizen's comment about the cleanliness of the toilets at the high school. That's not within our purview.
That's correct. That's correct.
And there were many things that are not within our purview.
Yeah, but I would have to wait until that came out. If I didn't have it in writing ahead of time and I heard it, I would have to hear it before I could say not within our purview. And I know, uh, but that's.
I, I just, I just thought it, it was a little more direct my way, but it can be any way. I, I, it doesn't make any difference to me.
So we have a suggestion for an amendment, and um, um, uh, not an amend, is it an amendment or just a change?
I don't, I don't think we have to do anything formal, Kathy, because I'm new to all this, but I think like if we make a motion to adopt this as presented tonight, we, we need changes to what was in the new materials anyway, you know? That's, that's my opinion.
Okay.
But I am definitely not ex, well experienced with Robert's rules, so.
Um, I think if anything happens to Joseph, we're all sunk, because he's our, he's our guru. All right, um, I, I think we, we, I, I would like to see three minutes added back into that. But if we could make a motion to um, accept the protocol um, as presented, um, with the knowledge that a few tweaks will be made. Motion.
So moved.
I will make that.
You.
I got it.
That motion. Did somebody second? I will do that. Thank you, Sharon. So Leah, first, okay, any further discussion? Joseph?
I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't wish to beat a dead horse here, but-
The horse died two hours ago, Joe.
Yeah, I know, I know. But I, I really have to compliment Ms. Cohen on the way she crafted the, the, the protocol after it was originally put forth. And I would have to take some exception with the chair on this. I, I think that what Ms. Cohen is saying is absolutely correct. She's saying in there, it's, it's pursuant to policy B E D H. And I agree with Ms. Cohen. Don't muddy the waters unnecessarily. The policy is in B D E, B E D H. It says three minutes in B E D H. It's a matter of public record. Go look it up. I, I kind of agree with, with, with Ms. Cohen. Don't gild the lily as it say, as they say. So I, I would take, take exception to you, Madam Chairman, on that request to add in the three minutes.
I gotta tell ya, I, I thought, I, I, my heart couldn't be broken anymore and you just did it, so congratulations.
Sorry.
Um, I will defer to the, um, policy committee to make the necessary edits. And I will, um, um, agree and defer to my esteemed colleague, uh, Attorney Gleason, um, from the wonderful town of Lancaster and say, "Don't worry about three minutes. If it's in the policy and people are gonna get the policy." Um, so there you have it. Leah?
Um, this is effective, uh, for our next meeting, is that right?
Yes, and that gonna be fun.
Cool.
Um, okay. Um, yes, Amy?
Wasn't there a motion that was seconded? Do we have to vote?
Yes, so, but then I asked if there were any questions or comments and Mr. Gleason had to disagree with me and break my heart, so I'm recovering from that. But now I will call the vote. If there are no objections, and I'm going to start with-
Leah just got her hand up.
I don't know who seconded it.
I'm sorry, what?
I don't know who seconded it.
Sharon seconded it.
Oh, okay. Alright, so Leah, yeah, I'll leave us on that. Alright. Joseph, what say you?
Uh, Madam Chairman, before I cast my vote, just a point of clarification. Are we voting on the last iteration of the policy as edited by Ms. Cohen? The one where we have my additions, Mr. Muenstein's additions? Is that what we're voting on?
Um, we, yeah, we'll, we are, we are not adding, I, I think what I heard is that there was interest in writing, um, adopting your statement, "Individuals interested in speaking," and then, et cetera.
Okay, I vote yes.
Yeah. Okay, so you're gonna vote yes. And then Mike, Horish.
Yes.
Okay. Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Amy?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, now we're cooking. Alright, where's the agenda? Here it is. Alright, so now, um, we are going to the item on the Audit Advisory Committee. This is pursuant to Section 11 of the Regional Agreement, which states, "The school committee shall create an audit advisory committee consisting of four voting members. One from each town appointed jointly by the Selectmen and Finance Committee of that town and one voting member appointed by the school committee, where that member shall not be a member of the school district's administration. Each committee member must be independent of the financial reporting system of the district and should possess a reasonable level of financial literacy. The Audit Advisory Committee shall advise, shall review the district's financial reporting process and annual audits, both financial and compliant." Um, this committee has not been able to function for the past two years because we did not have enough representation, uh, from towns to constitute a quorum. So, uh, we're going back to the well. This year, um, I have, um, would want to put, um, Rich Eckel forward as a candidate to, from the school committee, to serve, um, as our representative to the Audit Advisory Committee. So what I'd like to do is to, uh, put that to a motion and, and vote, so.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gleason.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Comments?
I have a question, Kathy.
Yes.
Just really quickly, uh, you said that there are four voting members. What does a committee like this actually vote on?
Um, they are, they are, um, they have to accept, Pat, can you help me out with this? They have to accept the, the audit report or what do they do?
Well, they review the audit report and they, you know, ask questions. And then I believe they're supposed to report out to the towns if they found any, um, irregularities. Also, another function that they have is that when it comes time to, um, if, if a decision is made to find another auditor, then they would be the ones that would help to vet candidates for, um, as a new auditor, so.
Do you work with this group?
Yes, I do. I work with that group.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions? Thanks, Leah, for clarifying. Yes, Rich?
I don't have a question per se. First of all, I wanted to thank, um, the committee for dominating me, the people that have, um, you know, put that forward. I appreciate the confidence. Um, I'd like to think that my background, working in the finance committee and Stowe, would allow me to help up with that. To answer your question a little bit, Leah, so there is, there's a rep that is elect, that is appointed, jointly appointed by the finance committee and the select board of each town. So Stowe did it back in July. I think Bolton is taking it up here shortly. It's on their, um, on their select board agenda. Um, Mike or Amy could probably talk to that. And, uh, I don't know if, I, 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 I think I saw something in the notes tonight for Lancaster that Lancaster's taking it up at the next meeting. Um, but there is a little misperception that this is some sort of operational financial role and though, although you can interview people in the committee, specifically Pat, about the financial protocol stuff, it, it is not an operational finance thing, right? Where we're gonna, it's, it's to oversee the, the, it's an audit advisory committee, meaning we're gonna oversee the audit, understand the financial protocols. We have the capacity to understand what is going on, but it's not a replacement or, or any kind of other financial oversight. So, so if any of the other select boards who have frankly come publicly stated that they're confused as to that and think this is an avenue to, um, look at the day-to-day operational finance of the, of the schools, that's not what this is.
Right, and that, that is, thank you for clarifying that. Um, and, um, I think once the committee is together with Pat's guidance, um, that's something that, um, will be, uh, should be abundantly clear. So, but thank you, Rich. Um, any other, yes, Rich?
Kathy, one more, one more thing I'd say is, you know, the committee hasn't met, I think, since, uh, you know, two thousand and eighteen. So it's worth putting it on the record that part of that is because, I, I think Elaine actually mentioned this, um, recently, that, you know, there hasn't been a quorum. So this is, this is a, a committee that's separate from the school committee.
Yes.
Whether they meet or not, whether the people are pointed but from other towns and they have enough people to meet, has nothing to do with the school committee or the school.
That's correct.
So if, if the towns want this to be successful, they need to mo, they need to nominate motivated people to be part of it.
That's correct. With, with an understanding of what the role is and what it is not, as you point out. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Okay, um, so I, I'm sorry, somebody moved and seconded for Rich. Alright, so now, ready to vote. Um, I'm gonna call the rule. I'm just gonna go in alphabetical order, so I'm first. Yes, Amy?
Yes.
And Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
I'm abstaining, since the vote is about me.
Uh, Joseph?
Yes.
Um, Mike?
Yes, and thank you, Rich.
Um, Mary?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Leah?
Yes.
Congratulations, Rich. You, even though you abstained, you had the votes to be a successful candidate and thank you for your willingness to do this. And, um, I'll be sending out, even though they have, um, things, uh, scheduled, I will be sending out a memo, um, tomorrow to the select boards and the FinComs, uh, letting them know that, um, that we're reconvening this and that we have selected a member. And once the, I have who the members are, I'm gonna turn that information over to you, Rich, um, to convene the meeting and then at that meeting, uh, the group can, um, uh, select a chair. Um, so if that's acceptable to you, that's how we will proceed.
That sounds great. I just wanna say thank you for you all, for your vote of confidence. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say, "Thanks to Elaine, who did it last year, and despite her best efforts, could not get the committee to have a quorum to meet." Uh, so I endeavor to, you know, see that through in the spirit that Elaine, I'm sure, had put the same effort in.
Thank you. Um, okay, so, um, it is ten eighteen. According to our bylaws, if we are going to continue the meeting past ten o'clock, we need to, to, um, vote to, to do that, is that correct?
I believe it is.
Okay, so can I entertain a motion to continue the meeting? Wake up!
So moved. Get a burrito.
Wait a second.
Second.
Okay, discussion, question? Okay, here we-
We're mas, we're masochists, please, we're masochists, let's vote.
You know, I get to that point where I'm, I'm not gonna sleep, but I'm just so punchy. I don't even know eh, whatever. So, um, Leah? Do you wanna, do you wanna go? Uh, Elaine?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Okay, um, Sharon?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
Uh, Joseph?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
Uh, Brett?
No.
Oh my god, you guys are killing me. Uh, Amy?
I think I seconded it, so I have to say yes.
Um, and me, yes. One, two, three, four, five.
Seven to, seven to four.
Seven, seven to four. So hang in there, buckaroos. We're heading for the home stretch.
May, may I make a motion to, um, um, like, do we still have all the subcommittee reports to do?
Hang on, we do, but what I'm going to propose is that we move the super, if there are no objections, I would like to move approval, uh, uh, the, the, the item, um, superintendent's goals to our January twenty-seventh meeting.
So moved.
We didn't need a movement, I can just do it, but I just, I don't know.
Yes.
So, without objections, so seeing no objections, we will do that. Now, the subcommittee reports, there is no budget and warrant report. Um, Dr. McCarthy?
So, oh, I'm on. Okay, so, uh, let me see, we met on January sixth, January eleventh. Um, finished up with the superintendent in regard to the, her goals and will meet again on February twenty-fourth, which will begin the review of the, of the school committee handbook, so that any, um, any suggestions that any member has, uh, if you would direct them to me in regard to the handbook. And, um, I will probably send out an email reminding you, cause I doubt you're gonna remember about that, um, at this particular moment. So that's it. That's the, that's the report.
Thank you. Leah? You're on. It's a goal-
Sorry, sorry. Um, so in addition to the other things that we've already dealt with tonight, um, I think that the only real thing that we're, there are two things really quick. So first thing is once COVID is over and remote meetings are no longer a thing, we're gonna be investigating the need for a more concrete policy about how people can continue to meet remotely. That's, that's like on the horizon. Um, another thing, um, that is maybe more pressing, and Brooke, this is what I wanted to bring up with Lisa earlier. We talked a little bit about the immunization, um, the flu vaccine in particular requirement, and whether or not we should adopt a policy on that, like some school systems have, and there is some guidance from MASC on that. So you guys can think about whether or not you want it there. The governor's order supersedes anyway, so we don't necessarily need it, um. The, but, uh, there seems to me to be the need to have parents send in documentation for their flu vaccines, and I wonder if there is some kind of protocol that you want parents to follow, if parents have already been following that. I know mine have not been sent, but the deadline has been extended to February twenty-eighth, I believe. So that is something that, um, I'm gonna need your help on.
Okay, sure, and I think that we should bring Lisa into that discussion as well. And certainly that's been a, a, a huge topic for conversation, um, with my superintendent's group. So, yeah, happy to weigh in.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no report from communication? Where's Mike Horish? Oh, there he is. Hi, I see your pillow there. You're not hiding it.
Pillow and a blanket, be careful, I'm halfway in bed.
I'm jealous. No, no report, uh, building committee, no report. Dear Jay?
Um, just that I have a, a poll out for our first meeting, which looks like, not everybody's responses are in, but it looks like it's gonna be either a week Monday or a week from this coming Thursday.
Sounds good. Okay.
You guys like my pillow?
I love it. I love it. Okay, everybody go get their, their, their security blanket or what do you call it? Uh, soothe their self-soothe, as long as it's not liquid. Um, and we'll do a show. Uh, but before that, okay, uh, items to be considered for next and/or future agendas. Um, the next meeting, we are going to need to have an executive session to approve, um, executive session minutes from June through, um, tonight. So Leah, I sent you an email, uh, but I couldn't send it, it's probably when you were up to your ears in something, but, um-
I have it, I have it.
Oh, okay, but you will, I'm gonna send you Mike Macaro's email address because the, the, um, minutes go directly to him.
Okay.
Um, he, um, looks at them and then he will be making a recommendation whether they are approved for release or approved, uh, approved not for release. So I'll hook you up with that. Um, the superintendent's, um, um, uh, goals will be on the next meeting. Alita, if you could add CPAC to the subcommittee reports, um, there'll be a report out on what they've been up to. Um, another mascot update, Brooke, because I think that committee, the task force that Tony was talking about. Um, 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 what else? I don't, let me get the, um-
Well, you've got some other hands up here, Kathy, Rich and Leah.
I was just gonna say, is it, Brooke, do you think that it will be too soon to do something on the high school hybrid? Do you think they'll have anything for, for the next meeting?
I don't know. I wouldn't wanna make a promise tonight, to be honest with you. I don't know whether they would or not.
Right. Alright, I was just trying to slip to the, um, the planning, um, uh, calendar. Rich, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I'd love for us to revisit the policy of the chair replying to all the emails. Um, I think there's eleven of us. And I personally would like to respond to emails that come, or communications, I guess, that come from people from, from Stowe specifically. You know, I'm elected to do that. And so I, I, the chair diligently replies to all these emails and I guess I think these are opportunities for us to engage with our constituents and, you know, dig to the next level down about what actually they're asking about and, and educate them and us to learn from their perspective, so.
Yep.
Love it. If, go ahead.
We can do that. I will, what I, it would require that we, uh, look at the protocol, um. I'll bring it up at the next meeting if you wanna put that on the agenda, Alita, and with the protocol, and you can amend the protocol if it's what folks wanna do. Okay, Rich?
Yeah, I guess, I just would take it one step. I'd love to see us get away from email and actually put a form on the site, so that when somebody fills it out, it tells us where they're from, what school, what, and maybe categorize the issues. And then there would be a report that could, that could be generated- And then there would be a report that could, that could be generated. And, you know, even though I may responding to the Stowe emails, I'd still be interested, since I represent all of the towns, to know. What is, what the other towns are talking about, so I think it's more than just who's replying. It's really looking at analytics and how we're being communicated and being more strategic about it.
And, and, you know, not to, to, well, I am interrupting, but I just wanted to make the point that when we. Put stuff on the agenda, it's a topic, and then what you're mentioning there would be part of our discussion for that topic at the next meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it was described properly, that's all.
Thank you. Uh, other, Brooke?
Yeah, I, I would really like to see us have a, a good chunk of time for an MSBA update. Um, and I'm thinking probably the first meeting in February, and I would love to have Dr. Foster come and talk about the amount of. Because so much work is going on behind the scenes right now, and I'd really like to put that forward, um. It's, it, it's all like paperwork types of stuff, but it's really important that our school committee knows how much work. Is being done for that MSBA project right now.
Look at that little leader, she's putting it right in this living document, right as I'm watching it, I thought I was hallucinating, but that's Alita. Um, okay, so, we have our budget workshop on the twenty-third, um. Okay, Lancaster listening, anything else that is on the agenda, we want on the agenda for the twenty-seventh? That you can think of? I'm sorry, Amy, go ahead.
Um, this may be addressed through superintendent's report, but I would love to hear an update on the principal search for the high school.
Yeah, I think that's pretty much, yeah, to everyone, but we'll make sure it's. Okay, um, alright, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy, the flu, maybe the flu vaccine, or if not, at the next meeting, the meeting after that.
No, put it on, if we don't, if you want Lisa to come and talk to that.
Or, Brooke, give us what, you, you tell us what you want us to do, I don't necessarily need to pull Lisa into.
I was gonna say, well, does this need to be a school committee, though you're really looking at your policy subcommittee first, before we bring it to school committee, so I don't know that it would be something for. School committee agenda, I think it's probably something more for your policy, um, agenda, and, and both Lisa and I could pop into that meeting.
Is that okay, Leah?
Yeah, that's great.
Sounds good, okay, um, if there are no objections, I think we are ready. To entertain a motion to enter into executive session, Anne Marie, did you alert the mic that we are?
Cause he's logged in, and he just has a, he has a sign that says school committee meeting, showing. So, I don't, I don't.
Elaine, you're on.
I moved to go into executive session at ten thirty P M pursuant to Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, subsection twenty-one A one. In other words, purpose one, to discuss an open meeting law complaint dated January fourth, twenty twenty-one, filed by Stan Weissaki. Against the members of the Nishoba Regional School Committee, executive session to include Superintendent Clenchey, Assistant Superintendent Dr. McGuire. And legal counsel Mike Macaro, committee will adjourn in executive session.
Second.
Okay, um, Kathy, yes, Amy?
Wrong button, Amy. She's there.
She just disappeared.
Turn off her camera.
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
The other Rich.
The other Rich, Mary?
Yes.
Um, Sharon?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Okay, um, is, um, those who.